So I read an article that said that National City was drawing on average cost of hotel room down in that year more than the average cost of hotel room.
How about this past week? I was in the room. I had to drive up there on my 40. I mean, what are you hoping for? My income will be back in average. How about the crowds? The winning. Yeah. I know.
The beauty is more than the ghosting Packers play the ring at Cali. There were a flight to Savannah for an anniversary. And I got to try three weeks. November is... November 7th. I want to go to Florida. I want to go Spain and Portugal and Spain. So I want to carve out three weeks for the next time going to Lisbon this time. Well, that and then go to Italy and kind of go across. Portugal, Spain, Azores, go into Italy and then into Greece. Done. And Slavic side. And the Yacht. They say it's pretty rich. I'm reading these articles about Italy. There's like some of the smaller cities are shutting down the number of tourists. Go out of here. CNN is kind of like overrun. Really? How long did it take?
When you go back there, we do that really cruise ship.
Right.
That they decommission cruise ship.
Yeah.
It was really nice.
That's cool. That's it. Yeah. Or just or even I would talk to them. Yeah. Or Saudi Arabia or kind of do that. My buddy, Giuseppe, says run Barre. You go to that side. You could do the inside, the outside of the Italy. It's really still Italy. You know. Boy, this wedding coming to my body. This year. May 20. Right. Or. I tell you. Very good. Five great days. I pray a weekend. She's very Sunday. But we're waiting for us Saturday. I think she'll come.
Oh, my God. Because that's all.
So this one, my buttons come off. One of them is a nut. Probably. Oh. Yeah. What in the world? Whatever Mr. Applegate's here for, I vote yes. He's got a shirt with that on. For all the practice of all we've done together over thirty years. You've earned six times. I'm on your side. I've got to go. Whatever Mr. Applegate's here for, I vote yes. He's got a shirt with that on. For all the practice of all we've done together over thirty years. You've earned six times. I'm on your side. I've got to go. So the only way that we're out. We drove. True. Thanks.
All right. We ready? I got seven spots.
Good evening. I'm going to go ahead and call to order the city council meeting for October 1st, 2018. Please stamp for invocations filed by pledge of allegiance and council personnel will lead us in invocation.
Let's pray. Gracious God, we come once again thanking you first of all for allowing us to be here this evening. Lord, we thank you for your grace and mercy that you continue to bless the people of Jefferson, Bellwitt. And Lord, as you bless them with your grace and mercy, bless us with your wisdom and with your strength. Lord, allow our minds to be on the things that you would have us to keep us, strengthen us, guide us in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ron. Have a roll call, please. Councilperson White. Councilperson Stotfield.
Here.
Councilperson Yon. Present. Councilperson Maples.
Here.
Councilperson Gill.
Here.
Councilperson Ellis.
Here.
Councilperson Samuel. Let the record reflect, seven council members present. Councilperson Hawkins and Councilperson Owen aren't here. Yes, Hawkins is on vacation and Matt should be here anytime. I need the minutes for our council budget workshop for September 12th, 2018. Motion for approval. Unless there's any questions or comments. I make the motion to approve. I got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I have the... We need to make the motion to approve our council regular proceeding minutes for September 17th, 2018. Unless there's any questions or comments, I'll entertain that motion. Someone?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Can I get approval of the agenda?
Any additions or motion approved as it is?
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Heather. Report of the clerk.
Yes, real quick. Sister Max came in last week and I just asked him if she could hear. They redid the worked on the sound, so everything's pretty good back there. The claim's not coming like.
Yeah, yeah. So they'll still come in and tweak it some more. They've got a couple other little things to do. And then the last thing is I was contacted by Aime this week and I've been asked to serve on the legislative committee again for Aime. So good. Congratulations. Have all the bills that submitted and paid for?
It's on the claims.
Okay, good. All right. Is anyone attending that Aime conference?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we will move on to old business. We have Heather. We have the 2018 OR 59 ordinance transferring certain funds within the same department. This did pass on the first and second. Were there any changes?
No.
Then I will entertain a motion for a third file.
Motion for OR 89 following.
Second. Got a motion and second passed 2018 OR 59 on the final reading. Is there any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Heather, you're still up. We have the 2018 OR 60 and ordinance for appropriation of tax rates.
We have a couple of requested changes. We had a couple of requested changes from you earlier. I just lost all the paperwork. I apologize. I have enough papers. So requested for the edit fund. I don't know if you want me to tell you what page. It's on the last two pages basically of the ordinance. So page 31 and 32. I have it. I have new pages for you. Here.
That's okay. I don't remark anything.
So on page 31 for the edit fund, the transfer out for public arts was lowered to 24,000. Mayor's lease payment was stayed the same. The transfer out for sidewalks was zero. Steamboat nights was zero. The transfer out for Fund 230 stayed the same. The road construction repair was zero and all of parks and green spaces, zero.
Right. In that sense, because I know it's your own easy because she's going to be heading out right after this meet, so it'd be easier for her to zero out edit and then whatever we see the county does to appropriate stuff back in. But it made me a little nervous when we do have by ordinance the obligations for the arts and then we did by ordinance the transfer out for the fund 230 and then having a lease agreement for the mayor. I thought we better just to be safe so we follow our ordinances and our lease agreements to keep those in. And then once we know for sure what the county does, then we'll come back and we'll adjust all.
What's the rationale for zeroing them out now and not just leaving them the same and then having to make the decision after we know what the council is? Is there a benefit to doing this now?
It's whatever you all desire to do.
I'm just...
Ah, okay.
We're going through making all these changes and I just wondered if there was a reason why we would do that. We would zero these things out now.
Well, I just sent that that I was just going off of what recommended being easier, which I said, you know, I kind of thought, well, being zeroed out would be, I could put back in rather than doing the budget reduction and what we do that way, we'll know exactly what we have and we can just put back in what we can put back in.
I guess my thought would be that if we have to back it down in January, then we have to, I say we, the administration hopefully would do that or us, would have to then go line by line and say, well, let's take this out then, 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 then. And then by doing it this way, we will know, they will know what is coming in and then they can say, okay, on a priority list because chances are we're not going to fund all that. Then they can be prioritized what is needed and they can have that, we can have that ready to go and just put it in. So it's... If it's in there, if it's in there past, it can be spent.
The fund total for the edit is 531,392. That was on the very last page.
Can you say that again?
531,392. Which brings the appropriations for all funds to 51,770,988. The other request was on page 22 to add a line item for YMCA under gaming. And there's no appropriation to that. It's just adding to the account.
I'm curious for the reasoning for that.
Well, I would miss the last budget session because I was at the Uzi meeting and so I didn't get to ask for it there. And after speaking with Heather, not having to change any numbers, if you just add the line item, then they would have to come next year and without any appropriation, they'd have to come next year and ask for it. And then it would or would not be appropriated.
To me, it just seems unusual to add, I mean, I don't understand why the YMCA, what organizations do we add, don't add? You know, with the idea that we may fund them at some time in the future. I mean, that's some...
Communities and schools.
Well, Aime might be cutting off the heels because you didn't make it to the last budget workshop, did you?
No.
Or Matt made the request, still under gaming, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
To put a line item in there for the community and schools. Right?
Mm-hmm. So I have a new ordinance for you all to sign if you want to adopt or first you have to make the changes and then, yeah, and then adopt the budget. Make a motion to make the changes, I guess.
I don't, I don't support having not-for-profit without, I guess, I kind of, I guess, I kind of what it says, how many do we just put on there? Because I've got some I could like to put on there, but I don't intend to. But I guess the community and schools, that was only because we appropriated money to them or was giving the money to them. So if we're not giving money to the YMCA.
I'm just following what the request was to put the line item in there.
I thought the last evening, I thought 5,000 was going to the YMCA.
Out of special projects you did.
For this year, correct?
Yeah. This is for next year. I could add that. I mean, I was just trying to, in the conversation with Heather about the numbers where, I mean, am I representing what we talked about correct? You would have to change a bunch of stuff if I asked for it.
I would, yes. Every time you change the budget, it's a lot of changes.
I was just trying to make it easier and I missed the budget workshop to not to put her through that.
And it's not asking to be funded at this time, just asking for line items to be in there.
Right.
So I guess the real thing, you come to where you can vote to fund it or not vote to fund it.
Right.
While we're talking about special projects out of the share of gaming, Vicki, did the homeless coalition ever send you their budgets?
No, I would, and it sent you out an email. No, they did not. Would you want me to shoot her an email?
It'd be preferred because I had some concerns about approving 75,000 dollars to an organization and not seeing their proposed budget for next year based on what salaries are going to be paid and whatnot.
Would you feel comfortable leaving the line item in there and then we put like we, after we see that?
It's the council's will. Just 75,000 is a lot of money we did to somebody without seeing a budget and we requested the budget and they didn't submit it and they still wanted 75,000 dollars, which to me is a substantial amount of money. But... From what I remember, weren't they going to be self-sufficient financially? Didn't we give them seed money to be able to start and then they were going to be able to be a self-funding organization thereafter?
They were supposed to be seeking some brands.
I mean, did everybody else remember that?
That was the intent. We didn't, going into it, we didn't anticipate ongoing.
It was created like two, two years ago?
I don't know how much lead time we want to allow.
I don't think we've ever requested the budget in the past. It's just a concern of mine, but when I ask if there were salaries being paid out of that and the answer is yes, I'd like to see what the budget would look like unless we're just putting 75,000 dollars toward one salary or two.
So does that sound okay? Do you leave the line item in and then we'll just appropriate it after we look at the budget? We can appropriate if we feel that we should come January or...
I'm good with that. So we zero that out? Is that what you're saying? Heather, is that going to cause you a lot of...
You'll have to give me half an hour to change your own budget. It's just that you could leave it here and just not put a claim through to pay them or, I mean, neither, because they're not going to...
I don't...
Vicki's in charge of that budget, so.
I don't anticipate not supporting it. I just want to see the budget before we give somebody 75,000 dollars.
That's about the point. I agree.
So I'm good leaving it in there and then just not submit a claim until we see the budget.
We've already talked about revisiting the budget in January anyway, right? Depending on what the decision is. So that might be just something else that we reconsider. I just sent an email over too as well to remind her to do that, so.
And as soon as I get it, I will.
I figured you'd do it.
Yeah, I hadn't gotten it yet.
I have a question. Not sure if it's legal or financial. The which trumps which from the standpoint of if we do a, with our salary ordinance, we're wanting to put back in the numbers of police and fire, which we used to have. And then we have an amount in the budget for salaries. I've said publicly many times, I don't support six firemen. I support three. The total amount of three was put in the budget originally for a full year, but we're going to hold off and hire six halfway through with the same amount of money. So I would like to be able to vote for the budget, but I, but if, I want to, I don't want to vote for adding the additional three firemen full-time because I don't think that's sustainable. I don't think that's the appropriate way to go. So if you have a pool of money that says salaries, but then you have a salary ordinance that says it can only pay for this many.
Well, this depends on your tolerance.
Well, you're under retention.
Yeah. So basically, I'm answering. So I would believe that there is a reasonable argument that, as I have said, once you budget money and it's in the correct place, then the folks who get to spend the money after you budget it, spend it anywhere they choose, as long as it comes out of that right place. So I believe that from your perspective, that if you're putting money in and if they don't spend it until halfway through the year and they've got six young men that want to, or and ladies, who want to be firefighters with no guarantee that they're going to have six fully funded positions the following year, then that's their responsibility. Because they got to come back to you and get whatever fully funded six firefighters will be for 2020. They're right. Make sure 2020. Now, Les is on a different retention, so he might have a different...
Don't say none.
Neither of us are going to testify in front of any House committee. Does that make sense?
Yes, except I guess what I think as well is if we pass an order, both of them are ordinances.
Correct.
If we pass another ordinance and we say it's for this many and we put a limit on it, you know, I mean, that has, I would think that has equal authority, but obviously I'm wrong, but...
And I would tell you that it is the amount of money that's available and they get to spend it the way they choose. And then we have a contract issue once you start hiring people, with how you diminish the number. And I think that once you put that money there and it does not spend a hundred percent, you're just kind of stuck with that issue.
Do I understand you correctly that the, if we pass the salary ordinance and it has six, then they don't necessarily spend it the way they choose. They have to hire six. Where if you don't put any number, but we appropriate the money, then they can hire one or, or wait for the end of the year and hire fifteen.
You just appropriate the money, it's not in the salary ordinance. And then the next year we've got a, yes, I mean...
Okay.
I would like to vote for both. I mean, I would like to support both because I am supportive of hiring some, but I just, I just don't think it's physically responsible, so I just hate to vote no, but okay.
Your solution would be what?
My solution would be if, if the answer I got from the attorney was, no, if you put a number in the salary ordinance that says this is how many firefighters we have and or police, then we can't, we can't hire more than that. And then that way I could fund the budget fully for three full firemen. I could hire them before. We could get them in earlier instead of waiting until July or whenever we're bringing them. But then we can control the amount of firefighters we have. Because in theory, what Larry's saying, I believe, is if they don't hire in July or six months through and they wait till October, they could, there's probably enough money in there to hire nine. And then come January if we don't have...
Well, the administration is going to have to prioritize in the following year, knowing how many they have committed to and would have to submit a budget the subsequent year that adequately funds those things.
I concur. I mean, I agree with that, but...
So there is, my point is just that there is some of a check on there. I mean, I...
When you have money in the bank, it's much easier to, to spend more freely than when it's really tight. And I'm, I'm looking down the road three years. That's what I'm, what I'm thinking when I, or four years, two years. So I would like to be able to vote for the budget, but I, but if, I want to, I don't want to vote for adding the additional three firemen full-time because I don't think that's sustainable, I don't think that's the appropriate way to go. So if you have a pool of money that says salaries, but then you have a salary ordinance that says it can only pay for this many.
Well, this depends on your comments.
Well, you're under retain.
Yeah. So basically, your answer. So I would believe that there is a reasonable argument that, as I have said, once you budget money and it's in the correct place, by the folks who get to spend the money after you budget it, spend it anywhere they choose, as long as it comes out of that right place. So I believe that from your perspective, that you're putting money in and if they don't spend it until halfway through the year and they've got six young men that want to, or and ladies, who want to be firefighters with no guarantee that they're going to have six fully funded positions the following year, then that's their role at the time. Because they got to come back to you and get whatever, fully funded six firefighters will be for 2020. They're right, make sure 2000, 2020. Now, Les is on a different retain, so he might have a different...
Don't say nothing.
Neither of us are going to testify in front of any House committee. He said no. Does that make sense?
Yes, except, I guess what I think as well is if we pass an ordinance, both of them are ordinances.
Correct.
If we pass another ordinance and we say it's for this many and we put a limit on it, you know, I mean, that has, I would think that is equal authority, but obviously I'm wrong, but...
And I would tell you that it is the amount of money that's available and they get to spend it the way they choose and then we have a contract issue once you start hiring people with how you diminish the number. And I think that once you put that money there and it does not spend a hundred percent, you're just kind of stuck with that issue.
Do I understand you correctly that the, if we pass the salary ordinance and it has six, then they don't necessarily spend it the way they choose, they have to hire six? Or if you don't put any number, but we appropriate the money, then they can hire one or wait for the, every other month, for the year and hire fifteen?
We just appropriate the money, it's not in the salary ordinance.
And then the next year we've got a, yes, I mean...
Okay.
I would like to vote for both, I mean, I would like to support both because I am supportive of hiring some, but I just, I just don't think it's physically responsible, so I just hate to vote no, but okay.
Your solution would be what?
My solution would be if, if the answer I got from the attorney was, no, if you put a number in the salary ordinance that says this is how many firefighters we have and or police, then we can't, we can't hire more than that. And, and then that way, I could fund the budget fully for three full firemen, I could hire them before, we could get them in earlier instead of waiting until July or whenever we're bringing them. But then we can control the amount of firefighters we have. Because in theory, what Larry's saying, I believe, is if they don't hire in July or six months through and they wait till October, they could, there's probably enough money in there to hire nine. And then come January if we don't have...
Well, the administration is going to have to prioritize in the following year, knowing how many they have committed to and would have to submit a budget the subsequent year that adequately funds those things.
I concur, I mean, I agree with that, but...
So there is, my point is just that there is some of a check on there, I mean, I...
When you have money in the bank, it's much easier to, to spend more freely than when it's really tight. And I'm, I'm looking down the road three years, is what I'm, what I'm thinking when I, or four years, two years.
You're telling an announcement that you're running again?
When you say it's unsustainable, what do you, how do you get there?
I'm saying that the costs of adding those employees along with, when you add up all their costs with the health insurance, we are, our levy only grows not quite three percent a year, two point seven, I don't know what that number is. And we're already getting, we have to, without using other pots of money, the Lloyd, if you will, for that, and we haven't done that for, for the police and fire, the money's not going to be there. Not, not being able to maintain, because we're capped, our levy is, our levy is not growing as fast as the services the city's going to need and so I could, I could try to get more numbers.
When you say we're using Lloyd, you're talking about, you're going to use it, we use Lloyd for like equipment for them, right? Things of that nature.
We do, we do, and there's, that is a big part of Lloyd, that one is a big part of money. That's right here.
But you think we'll have to dive into that or we'll be forced to because it's unsustainable to do, to pay for salaries?
Yes.
Nathan, would you entertain the idea of maybe lowering what's proposed to be appropriated for overtime, to accommodate? Because if I hear the fire chief correctly, a lot of, a lot of the pay, the extra requests for overtime, this should eliminate some of the problem.
Yeah, I would rather, if our firefighters, if any employee works overtime, we have to fund it.
Yes, right.
And what's happened, I would say almost every year since I've been on the council, maybe not every year, but we always have to add overtime. We've added a lot of employees, but we always have to. So I don't think, well, I would hope that would be, I would rather lower the salary line item and if we're, if we're going to wait for half of the year, then, then lower it by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars because the additional is three hundred, I believe, maybe I'm wrong. It's about a hundred per, per three, so it's three hundred thousand. I'd rather lower that and, and then if they want to hire, then they have to either wait longer, they go ahead and hire three at the beginning and then we have this conversation later next year and say, how's our money, do we want three more?
So you're saying there that if you lower it, to make it comfortable, you know, we get this budget passed, you lower it to accommodate three, but then we can revisit it when they're ready to hire and if the money's there, we can look at hiring, if the ones that are here, if we have enough folks to support, we can hire an additional three?
Well, then you're technically supporting three being hired halfway through the year, correct?
I mean, I would rather we hire three January because I hear we need, we need more. Why in the world do we wait till July? So let's get three in. I would, I would, as, I would even if I just had a commitment that said, we will only hire three, I could, I would, I would do that on a, on a commitment from, from the mayor, but...
Do you think if we just hired three though, that would satisfy the shortage out in the sixth district? Because I...
I think there's a reason why six are being proposed.
To fill, to be able to outfit a truck, right?
I mean, yeah, I think the idea is that, that by half step, by half, having enough firefighters with, for a few years with six or for a year, however long, the idea is then, then staffing another six would immediately allow for the apparatus in the future based on what the group looks like.
So for a compromise, I know I can support the three, but for that half a year, but then come when it's time to hire, we revisit, putting three more to hire, see if the votes are, the votes are there, not hiring the three. I support getting the six in there because of the sixth district. If that'll help, if that'll ease your mind putting in for the three, but not for the full year, but for, would that be a good compromise if we put the three in?
I don't think that's what Nathan was saying.
I don't know, that's why I'm asking, if he could compromise on that or if you're staying, no?
I don't know if you, I don't know if you need my vote, you know, we may be beating a dead horse here, but I do, I hate voting against a budget, I don't like it because I've put some time into doing it. But it's just, it's just a concern, it truly is a concern, and I've heard, I don't, I don't think we've had enough discussion on what the plan is and what, what do we need? Because it was just not long ago, we were like talking about building a new firehouse. Well, that's not, that's not three or six, you're talking eighteen. So I just, and I don't want to drag them through the, through the, but I don't mean that, I just don't.
The discussions I've had were that, I mean, six is great because we know we're understaffed and that'll give us another apparatus out there, but I think we know that we're not meeting the needs and we've had a couple total losses, I think, in that area because they were tied up one place and then it took, you know, the next, to back up too long to get there. And this will provide, with River Ridge, at least another apparatus out there.
Even, even the numbers to me don't add up because to add an apparatus, you need three.
I think they want a ladder truck, I think they need six for that. Am I right?
Well, you've got three crews though.
But you got three crews.
You've got H and B crew, C crews, because that would be nine for that.
If you're adding an apparatus, you need nine.
Well, they really need fifteen.
Maybe, maybe so.
I thought it was twelve, so I'm more than I'll hear that.
I think it's up for debate, but I know the, the odd man out on that, but I think it's up for debate.
I will mention two years ago, I believe, during the budget, is that we did not hire any firefighters and hired six police officers with the understanding that we get support. So if we go back on that deal, then I feel like it's a blemish on us that we skipped them a year and...
And we also get increasingly frustrated when overtime is given to us.
And if the, I support the six firefighters, but I do support them with the understanding is that I don't expect to see the fire chief in here asking for more overtime next year. I potentially would think that it would be, he would be reducing that budget if that's the concern that we continually have.
And I'd point blank ask that question when he was here and he said yes, that because these are just six that will be added.
Until a new...
Until a completely new apparatus is...
They should be filling the spots of these constant overtime requests we have. In my history, it's never gone down and what was asked for in this overtime budget was more than previous year, so, I mean, I hope that happens, that would be nice.
It'll take time for the apparatus, right? Because they have to order the specs and that takes a whole...
Well, if they add another apparatus, then it's not going to reduce overtime, right? Because it's going to be a staffed apparatus.
Right, and what I'm saying is that it's going to take time to do that.
It takes time for the next time.
So they, that apparatus probably wouldn't be finished until 2020. So that'll give that six enough time or the availability to fill in for the overtime issues that we have. Plus hiring them all at once, I think helps with training costs, getting them together and all at the same time and they able to do that, reduce the cost for that.
I just felt like two years ago when we said we'd do this and then now we're not, while we're in these concerns presented, because if not, we should have did three firefighters and three police officers. Being from public safety, I do know there is a different strategy from hiring firefighters than there is police. You can hire one police officer and make a significant change, whereas firefighters will need a group to be hired and then you're going to be adding a new crew to it.
And I think we held off from hiring because we were thinking River Ridge was going to assist us in...
Yeah, it was a big hustle, too.
That's correct, that's correct.
So that's, they should have been hired earlier, but we held off.
Yes, they held off, that was supposed to be last year, but they didn't get anything last year as far as new firefighters.
So this is making good on our word on what we said to them.
I think the chief also said, I think Callie might have asked him, he's talking about overtime, that the three, having three right now won't help me, that's why he's asking for this, this six.
How much, I mean, they heavily rely on the Lloyd fund, right? They heavily rely on the Lloyd fund?
Well, for, mainly for capital costs, I mean, that's, that's been the, it's on page, Lloyd is on page thirty, thirty, eight, thirty. I mean, it's, it's a lot of equipment, repair, maintenance, you know, capital lease, I assume, like a truck or fire truck.
Did we get a twelve line statement today?
Yes.
I think with the way we budgeted that, that fund remains pretty healthy.
The other issue that I have is we're, we're bringing in two point eight this year and that, or next year, that's the projection, two point eight, and we're spending two point eight. And I don't think we should, I think we should only spend eighty-five or ninety percent of that, so we keep a little bit, we continue to put some back because like we had with the fire truck, we had, we just, we paid for it, it's been a couple of years or whatever, we just, maybe more than a couple now, I don't know, but we had to just basically pay cash for it when we had it ready, so having that...
Heather, you, your practice is that you keep it exactly the same as the prior year, right? Because you're not sure what the percentage will be?
Revenue's, yes.
And do we anticipate this increasing?
Yes. I just got a notification from the Department of Revenue today, it's not certified yet to what each municipality gets, but as a whole, all of the income taxes increased.
Is there a, is there a number that they projected at this point?
It went up a little over four percent, but that doesn't necessarily mean that Lloyd goes up four percent.
I know, right.
Yes.
Yeah, because our Lloyd won't increase because the county thing for their levy had agreement.
It'll increase, but not at the same percentage that it has been.
Right. But even from those estimates that we got, it's still higher than twenty, not by very much, but it is higher than what was estimated.
Sorry, I came in late. I don't know, uh...
We're on the budget.
She mentioned we're on the budget, but I don't know.
We're on number two.
Has any, have we changed anything?
Yes.
The edit, did you read the email yet?
I read it, but I wasn't...
Basically zeroing out the edit for like green space and styler.
Yeah, and then we'll add back in once we know for sure what the county's going to do. It's either prepared to plug in all the numbers, then with the ones that we're leaving in is the ones that were either ordinance obligated to or lease obligated to. That's a rather safe and sorry scenario.
I asked the question of why wouldn't we just leave it and then subtract when we...
Know what the real cut is.
Right, I didn't, I didn't know what the benefit was of cutting before or after, but I don't, I don't know where the council's standing.
Whatever you guys are comfortable with.
Right now, we're discussing the three police officers, sorry, firefighters for the entire year versus six for the half year.
So, did we take a vote?
No, we're still discussing the changes.
So we haven't decided anything? Oh, sorry. I'm caught up.
You are now fully briefed.
You want to talk about that?
I do apologize.
It's not the last party, but it's discussion.
On page twenty-two, they did add under share gaming, the YMCA with no budget, no number.
No appropriation?
Yeah.
And that was voted on?
No, sir.
Nothing's been voted on yet.
No votes taken, gotcha.
I miss it.
So then have the, I mean, we would have to vote to amend, right? Because we passed on the first and second?
Yes, yes.
So I feel like I'm taking you all back through this all over again, but is there, I mean, I would, I would think that we would be more, we would be in a better place to leave the budget as it is and make the cuts once the county's decided. Do we have the interlocal agreement on the agenda?
It is.
It's coming, I'm assuming.
So we don't know if we should be cutting a little or a lot and...
Yeah, my, my thought was that, and maybe this is not the right way to think about it, but my thought is that if we leave things the same and then we get this bad news, then it will be put on the administration to figure out where the cuts need to be as opposed to cutting everything and deciding what should be added back in. So that, because I personally, I mean, I think that that decision, what the priorities of what's going to go probably rests on the administration, but I'm not, it's not a deal breaker for me if we decide to do it this way where we zero everything out.
It's my opinion, the problem with, the issue that I have with that is if, if we do it now, then when we know the money we have, then we say, here, here, administration, you divide up, but, but if we don't do it that way and we leave it as is and we have to cut it in a significant way, then in theory, the administration could come back and say, no, you have my budget, it is what it is, we have the money in reserves to pay for it all, and we, and we do, we wouldn't have to cut a thing, but, but we would again eat into those reserves.
Well, if it's one point million, then...
I mean, that's just the, the difference, it's not an, it's not an attempt to try to take any of that away, it's like, when we know what it is, here's the pot, spend it, you know, prioritize it, spend it as you want it, as you need it, and then we, you know, agree to put it in. It's just, you can look at it from, is it half full or half empty, you know?
Lisa, are you dead set on either option?
Yeah, I, I like the, what was proposed out of the edit and what I sent out, I love to do the safe and sorry, and then I think it'd just be easier just to appropriate back in what we need to because I think either way, cuts are going to have to be made and I just think it's, we're talking with Heather, talking with Heather, that just, it's just what I keep.
What I fear is that if we do that, then that gives the county, well, kind of a green light, say, go ahead.
Take it all?
Yeah.
Because it's obviously not something we need, which isn't the case.
Right.
That's what I would...
And they would use the argument that it's not affecting their budget because their budget is zero.
Right.
I could see them making that argument, I mean, I haven't spoken with anybody there, so you got it.
I guess I'm a little confused as to why, I understand the concern, you won't go until the twenty-second, what the county council's going to do, and I'll delve into the interlocal later on. Why not just zero out the edit? That's, to me, that's the safe thing to do.
And that's what I...
And then do an additional appropriation in January to reflect whatever your edit funds are, right?
And that's what I proposed, but rather than zeroing all out, all the edit out, I was afraid to zero out what we are ordinance bound to in the lease, like the lease for the mayor's car, that's a lease, so leaving those, that stuff in there...
Come back and do an additional appropriation, your first meeting in January, I mean, I think we can finagle things to make that happen, I mean, I...
I don't think part of that was that we didn't want to signal that, oh, we're cutting the lease payment for the mayor's vehicle.
Yeah, and I didn't want to, well, okay, you're going to fund rates, is that by ordinance you're going to do? I was just...
I can...
By ordinance, I thought.
So you guys, based on your negotiations, are okay with zeroing?
No, not by...
I think, I understand the concern right now, I mean, we're confident the interlocal agreement will be, will be adopted by the county council. We've, we've worked with Clarksville and we've worked with the county, we think that there's an agreement there. Obviously, we don't know until it's voted on by the county, you'll know that on the Your options are either zero the edit out, adopt the budget as is, and then you would have to come in and possibly do a reduction in January.
And what are the pitfalls of that, if any?
Well, I mean, technically, the money's appropriated, but I mean, I mean, if you do, if you, if you come, if you pass as is and you come in January and do your reduction, I mean, we're not going to be able to spend any money if you immediately do that in January, you know?
But it takes two meetings, right? In January?
Mm-hmm.
Unless we do an, a special. And I mean, it, it's happened before where big ticket items were purchased right at the beginning of the year. I'm not saying this administration, I'm saying if it's in there, they can obligate it January first. And would they do it? Probably not, but could they? Yeah. Yeah, unless you said it.
I mean, I can, I mean, I can tell you right now, if for some reason the county does not go along with this interlocal agreement, this is a bigger issue than the city council. This is, this is an issue for the administration, and we're not, and we're, we're aware of that, and we're not gonna start spending money that we don't have. I mean, bottom line is this, folks, at the end of the day, you get, the extra, your estimated income tax is around two point five, two point six million dollars. If the county goes down the road of implementing a new jail tax, you're gonna lose one point nine million of that. Now, that's, that's a significant hit, and the administration's aware of that, and we're not gonna start spending money we don't have. So, I mean... But we're, we believe we have an agreement with the county. We will find out on October twenty-second.
So, the, just to be clear, the administration is recommending that we, or potentially you, I won't even say on behalf of the, that we just zero out the edit?
I'm just saying that's, that's the option. I know that was an option that Heather has, has conveyed. I mean, that's an option. Option is, it tend, you keep it as it is, do, do a reduction in January. The other option is, which Heather doesn't like this at all, you, you wait and adopt your budget after October twenty-second. She doesn't want me to say that.
Heather's holding back tears. I see the tears, there's a glisten in their eyes over there.
Well, I, I'm not dead set either way. I can go with keeping it as it is and then doing a reduction later. I can go with zeroing it out.
Yeah, I mean, as I said, it's not a deal breaker for me. I just, I think that if, if it makes certain, some council members feel more comfortable being protected that way, then I understand that.
Any other option is, you, you can keep it as it is, and then you could say, if for some reason things don't work out on October twenty-second with the county council, you can come back and adopt an ordinance or resolution that says that, you know, effective January one, that there'll be no contracts entered in out of edit above a certain dollar amount. You all have done that before without, unless we receive your approval.
Seems like there's some, no, really hard either way. You submitted an email to everybody.
Yeah, I don't want...
I support your email. If you, if we wanna zero it all the way out, that's fine. If we wanna leave some, that's fine.
That makes me nervous because of our negotiations with the EPA. With, we...
Zeroing it all out?
Yeah, because we already did an ordinance for the Eighth Street project, but ordinance were tied to the arcs, and by lease agreement, we're tied to the vehicle, so I just...
We don't wanna pull our support for the...
If we wipe all that out, we may not have the support to put it back in January.
Right.
So, leave it in there, we'll do the reduction we have to do in January. I mean, we're, this council already, you know, we, we get lectured about all these additional appropriations. I mean, we're gonna do two million dollars in additional appropriations in January? Because we wiped it out in the budget, we didn't budget properly, or...
No, because we're facing this with our edit distribution. I think you understand our circumstances.
At the end of the last meeting, I believe it was Councilperson Hawkins, said, any changes? So, we were talking about things made some of us uncomfortable. He said, bring those back to the very next meeting. And some of us did that. And, you know, I took it serious. And then that's why, if I wasn't serious, I wouldn't put my neck out there saying that I'm against six firefighters. I don't like, happen to say that. But we, I just did what I was asked to do, and so that's, we brought it back, so...
I think you have another option, and maybe this is the better way to do it. Is pass the budget as is, even if, if for some reason the county believes that a new jail tax is the prudent way to go. You come back after that, when that occurs, and do, go ahead and adopt a reduction, an ordinance reducing, or a reduction, but make it effective January one. I think you can do that.
We can do that?
Yes.
Can we do that in November?
So...
Just would be effective January one.
Regardless of which way it goes, we can do the reduction.
Yeah, you're, I thought you were gonna have to, I mean, you're gonna have to reduce something at some point, yes. Question is how much? You would just make that effective January one.
I like that.
I like having more information when making decisions, and I feel like it makes sense to have the decision of what the council's going to do.
Because here's the thing, I mean, the, the folks that aren't in the City of Jeff, I mean, it's always, you know, Jeff City's got all this money, and, you know, Jeff City's complaining because they have to help the county out. And we, we've helped the county out quite a bit, and I think we're all happy to do so. But, you know, to say, you know, Jeff City doesn't need all this money, well, there are a lot of things that come out of edit that we really do need, and just zeroing it all out basically, you know, validates the opinion that Jeff City has all this money they really don't need, which is, I don't think is the case.
I don't understand that, but I just disagree with that much, don't you?
But I mean, if, if, if your concern is, is that...
On the budget?
If the county takes some action that has a significant hit on the city's edit, well, then you just come back and do an ordinance whenever that occurs, effective January one, and reduce whatever our edit, edit is. Which you're probably gonna have to do at some point anyway, even if...
So, is there any will to pass it as it is?
I made the motion last meeting to pass it as it is. I would do it again, but I don't wanna...
Well, I, I would, on a separate piece of business, if I, I could be recognized to make a motion. Um, I move to add the YMCA to the, as a line item under special projects.
Page twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay. I was gonna ask, so I'm taking page twenty-two out of my packet and putting in page twenty-two in the packet in the ordinance that's packed, okay?
Yes.
And that's just giving it a GL number for the YMCA?
Yes.
At zero dollars?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to the motion?
I don't, I don't remember. Somebody second you, don't, uh, Dustin?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, so this is just to add?
The line item under, on page twenty-two, under communities and schools, for YMCA.
All right, I'll second. So, I got a motion and a second to add the line item, to add the YMCA with zero budget. Do you go to discussion?
For the call, please.
Okay. Hold on just a second. This is page twenty-two.
We should have moved some of these guys up. I'm sorry.
This is all over business. Page two. Okay, twenty-two.
And that's a, did I say, I'm not sure I said it correctly, a motion to amend?
Yes. But I gotta do this road caution and all this, so...
Sorry, we didn't want to make a time?
This is to vote on adding page twenty-two, which is YMCA.
Correct.
Amending the budget. Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Sestabney?
Nope.
Councilperson Yon?
Aye.
Councilperson Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Samuel?
No.
Councilperson Ellis?
No.
Council President Gill?
Aye.
Okay, that passed. Now... So...
Very much discussion on the budget.
So, are we then... Sorry. I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure I have the right things in here for you all signed, okay?
Right.
So, as of it stands right now, we are looking at twenty eighteen O R sixty that has the adopted tax levy at twenty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty... Twenty-nine million, two hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. The one that's in your packet, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I just wanna make sure we're in the right order. So... Whatever. So, um, are, as, do we, did we decide then that we're just gonna try to leave the budget?
We haven't decided yet.
We haven't, okay, so we were doing separate amendments?
So...
So, should we just, uh...
Is there anybody else that has an amendment, an amendment to make?
I mean, I know we're gonna have to revisit it regardless, so...
If there aren't any more amendments, I'll make a motion to approve eighteen O R sixty on the final reading.
Okay, I got a motion, a second to pass two thousand, amended two thousand eighteen O R sixty on the third and final. As it stands, that and the YMCA, is it the amendment? I'll just let you all know, I'll be voting against this then. So, is there any further discussion?
We'll do, we'll do.
Yes, sir.
Just to make sure.
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Sestabney?
Nope.
Councilperson Yon?
Aye.
Councilperson Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Samuel?
No.
Councilperson Ellis?
No.
Council President Gill?
No.
Failed.
Okay, we got a bunch of folks, all right. So, are you gonna support it if it's amended to reflect your changes in the email that went out?
That is correct. And that was, I was kinda unclear on that, so...
It's a problematic reason.
I know.
Well, that's why I asked...
I can't make a motion.
Councilperson Owen clearly asked, does anybody have any other amendments?
Right, I mean, I'm not making a motion.
I'm not making a motion.
So...
I supported it the way it was.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, I guess we're at an impasse, I don't know what's...
And we moved to reconsider?
Means it goes back to what it was?
No, I think somebody needs to make a motion, I mean, I mean...
I can't make a motion. I would have made an amendment, but I can't make a motion.
We gotta have a budget here, folks. I mean, this looks like three rank service.
I move to reconsider, uh, a question with the addition of the, uh...
Well, it would be zeroing edit.
No, with the addition of the, uh, well, most, some of it. Of the amendments that were presented earlier regarding edit.
So, is that page, I'm sorry, sir. Is that page thirty-one, thirty-two? Or, yeah.
Yes.
With the budget adopted as...
I believe it's zeroing all...
Yeah, I wanna make sure, I have all the numbers correct.
I think it's zeroing all edit out except the mayor's lease payment for his vehicle.
So, we need forty-eight million, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars, correct?
Yeah, and the total appropriation for edit is five thirty-one, three ninety-two.
Hold on a second, please. I'm sorry, but I gotta shuffle papers, and I wanna make sure I'm not caught in doing anything wrong.
So, do we have to sign two ordinances? Do we have to sign a failed budget and then a...
Yep.
You have to sign a failed budget and a...
No.
No.
No. I didn't know, but I'd be record about the first one.
Oh, question while she's looking for that, Larry. Can you, we're gonna come back and modify all of this anyway, whatever we know. Will you seek another answer to the question I asked earlier to see if there's any precedent or anything on it? The number, putting the number, which, which comes...
Depending on how many firefighters they're trying to...
And so, I mean, you're, the avenue there then might be to, with the salary, salary ordinance, changing the number of positions in the salary. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
If, if that were, had support versus what's budgeted?
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure I was clear and understanding your opinion.
So, if we're, if we're worried about the edit being, is it, is the fear of the edit being spent in January before we make cuts, like if we pass the budget, the administration says, well, we're gonna spend it all anyway, and we can't make the cuts?
Well, I said we could do a reduction.
You could do, if, if October twenty-second, the county council takes action that would be not in the best interest of the City of Jeffersonville, you as the city council could immediately come back and do an ordinance that takes effect January one, reduce the edit by whatever amount you all feel is appropriate.
Right, that was with it, this last motion passed?
If, if you approve the budget as is.
So, that motion passed?
As is, correct.
But even if we didn't do that, I mean, the council in the past, when talking about circuit breakers, has moved, you know, all capital money under itself, you know, in an effort to control those dollars until circuit breakers were certified and the budgets could be revisited. So, zeroing it out, and we just don't have any precedents for this type of action. But we do have precedents for, for coming back and fixing things later. We do have precedents for appropriation by reduction. We do have precedents for moving money under the council's line item in order to, to maintain control of the money until we can know what real numbers are. So, I'm not gonna vote for zeroing out all of our paving, sidewalks, green space. Those things aren't, you know, hard, hard decisions are gonna have to be made, but we're not, we don't have to cut all of those things right off the bat. Plus, are we cutting all of the money that's going to the Parks Department out of edit?
And public art and...
For, you know, all of those events that that supports.
Heather, I'm, I'm sorry, will you finish?
Yes.
So, by zeroing out edit, does that create a problem in the future from the DLGF getting the money back because we've sent a budget to them that has zero? Does it create a problem?
You guys do additional appropriations every meeting, so it's the same thing as getting additional appropriation.
Exactly the same.
Because we'll get the money, so if the county does nothing, the money will come to us regardless, whether we budget it or not.
Yes.
Okay.
Whatever that, whatever that number is determined, yes.
Comes to us, whether we budget it or not.
Yes.
Okay.
And my, my comment would be that because we know, we don't know what that number's gonna be. We, we can guesstimate, but we don't know until the meeting, less alluded to. Rather than assuming that we, we getting this amount of money and we know we're not, let's wait till we, wait till it's in, and then we say, folks, this is the money we have. Administration, tell us how you wanna spend it. Or, council, how do you wanna spend it? I will, I will second your motion, but then you're not...
We're predicting the future. We, we don't know what the county's gonna do. We're making a decision based off something that we have no idea what's gonna happen.
I think it, I think both solutions probably get us to a very similar place.
Yep.
And if one solution will allow the budget to pass, if that is, if that is a potential deal breaker for the budget passing, then I'm support, I will support that. I mean, I think that...
The drawback to that is, you, you've gotta get, sit there and go through an entire, putting together an entire edit budget again. Where if you say, okay, we're gonna pass the edit budget, and the county imposes the will tax, then we're gonna reduce the jail tax. Will tax, that was another one. So, I mean, why would you put yourself through all this again to put together an edit budget when you may not need to do that?
Under this philosophy, why don't we just put three million dollars in road paving so we get our maximum property levy, you know, every year? And then after we decide how much our, our actuals are gonna be, we can, you know, decide, decide what the budget's gonna be after the first of the year.
So, would this require if we zero this budget, after us, the additional appropriation for all these extra line items that we zeroed out?
If we...
I have a council member that's all, that's against that.
We're used as a vote for additional appropriations. So, if we had low attendants show up, we could potentially, none of this could even possibly happen. They could get voted down every time.
It just seems to me, the logical thing to do would be pass the budget as is. If the county takes some adverse decision or adverse step against, against the city on the edit distribution, is to come back immediately after that and do, uh, ordinance of reduction effective January one, and I mean, that's, that's an ordinance, it's, it's binding.
And then we'll make hard decisions on real data, not guesstimates.
Isn't that the, the, the motion and the second that just got voted down?
The motion, the motion is saying you gotta vote out those to approve the budget as is.
And that's what you just proposed, with the anticipation of doing a reduction. So, that's, the motion's not gonna apply, we just voted on it, and it got voted down.
I thought maybe, maybe it was unclear as, as to whether or not that reduction was going to be effective.
We could do a reduction.
Larry, Larry agrees with me that if you did that, that's a binding ordinance, and it would be effective January one.
You all always control the money. And that's how you choose to control it, is through your ordinance and the figure I put out. So, if you can control the money anyway, let me ask a question. So, Heather, if there's not a budget passed, what happens? They don't pass a budget by November one.
They have until November first to adopt a budget.
And if there's a meeting on October twenty-second that has everyone concerned about what the result's gonna be, and you have until November first to pass the budget, then all this trepidation that I'm seeing here would be a lead.
But that's also, well, it's also putting, in a, in my opinion, an inappropriate amount of pressure to be able to submit that budget prior to November first.
Or next meeting will be November sixth. So, it needs to be passed tonight.
I mean, I.
So, regarding the motion to re, regarding the ordinance to reduce is what we're talking about.
Next meeting's October fifteenth.
I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself.
Well, the next meeting after their meeting is.
Yeah, that's where I was. That was my mind.
Might be a special meeting. And Heather works a lot of hours that week to get it, which is fine, but if that's what it was.
So, we can talk, so.
I'm just, Councilman Ellis, can you just reiterate what issues you have with the budget? Is there something specific that is preventing you from voting for the budget?
Well, first thing, I didn't like it that included in the budget is still the six firefighters. I support the three firefighters, not the six, and I will continue to vote. I'm not in favor of adding a line item for any special group, because I cannot name a lot of groups here in the city of Jeffersonville that probably need to be put on the line item so that we can appropriate money. And if we are gonna appropriate money to special groups, then we need to look at their budgets and see just how much money is, they have in their spending budgets, how much money is going for salaries and so forth, and we're not doing that. I think, I think we're really remiss in our job to be protecting the taxpayers. What we're doing is we're just throwing money out, and when it comes to taxpayers, we don't care about those people out there. We don't care about the people that have a hard time getting a meal every day. We don't care about the people that has the higher sewer bills and they can't make it in different things. What we're doing is we're setting up here, acting like we're gods, and putting situations of trepidations on the people out there. And that's why I take the positions that I do.
Do you support removing the six thousand dollars from J and L A as a specialty here?
J and L A?
Well, it's the National Night Out.
National Night Out?
It's in the budget.
It's not a specialty group like the YMCA or like Child Play or like Community Action Agency or something like that. Those are the ones that I'm talking about. J and L A basically is a city function.
It's the National Night Out only.
Absolutely.
Well, all of the departments and most of the politicians are participating in J and L A.
So, I guess, I know that several councilmembers are likely voting against this budget because of the differing opinions on hiring six firefighters for half the year or three firefighters for the full year, which equal the same dollar amount. And so, I don't know if that's really defined in the budget. And I know that Councilman Samuel's question was, is there another way that we could define that? Because to his point, theoretically, on the twelfth month, they could hire twelve or whatever, you know, because they have all of that left. So, and I know that's a question for legal, but just again, in an effort to have support for this budget, I don't, that line item would not change at all whether you agree with three for the full year or six for the half year. Am I understanding that correctly? I mean, what would our avenues be for being able to?
They're gonna propose that in the salary ordinance.
Right.
So, that's not a change. That wouldn't change.
I'm just thinking, we have to have a budget. And if that's something that, really, in deciding on that issue, if that's actually not what we're talking about here, because we're talking about the same dollar amount for either proposal, I'd like to have a budget passed. It's just a thought.
Madam President, what do you, what would you find acceptable in order to, as a compromise, to pass the budget?
Well, I, I can only speak for myself, so. And I've been very clear, I support the six firefighters being hired in July, because we have an issue out there in the sixth district that I think needs to be addressed.
The edit?
The edit, I respect her, but those opinions, but I've been upfront, I've sent the email out, I've been upfront from the beginning. I don't know if we're gonna have an agreement. My concern is, is that one. I talked to Barbara Hollis today, she hasn't even seen the agreement that's gonna be sent to her. So, I'm hopeful that we're gonna have an agreement passed. I do also know that the county has two new courts that are coming in and they're expressing they're gonna out of state. So, if we don't have, we have agreement now, we're eventually gonna be looking at a tax, that's my opinion. But to me, I'd rather be safe than sorry, after discussing it with, rather than zero out even less said, zero out the edit, but I didn't feel comfortable zeroing everything out that we were obligated either by ordinance or by the lease agreement. And then once we get from the, and if we need to do additional and have it ready to go January one, I'm fine with that, but.
Heather, would you mind going over what we did with the edit? Matt was not here when you did that.
The change note was in there.
Yes.
I think I have it written down, I believe so.
What's wrong with the premise of doing an ordinance of reduction? If the county does what we hope they will not do?
Because I just know how this council is up, where there's been key things, and then we don't know when people are taking vacations. We don't know when, I just said I'd rather be safe.
Well, that's the issue, that's the issue, no matter.
See what we need back in, and if you wanna put in all the parks back in, you still have all those numbers. We can, we can do that. I just have, be conservative, be safe than sorry, is just.
But we're always safe, because we can change it before the budget is enacted.
We'll have three months or two months to change it. I mean, if that's not acceptable, we can always schedule a special meeting before November first and.
The twenty-third.
Yeah, after the twenty-second, as long as it's after the twenty-second.
Yeah, so I'm free on Tuesday.
So, let me ask this.
And I didn't think it was gonna be a deal breaker, because we talked about it, several of the council expressed that as long as, either way, we're gonna end up the same, but then I guess different points of view.
In my opinion, it's the exact same thing. It's just more safe to do a reduction, because you already know what your target number is. And Matt made some very good points about zeroing the budget completely out, alluding to the county that we don't need that money. And at the end of the day, do the reductions with the money you know you're gonna get and before January, and nobody has to have to spend it, as Nathan did his concern. So, I thought after the discussion, that was the most, I guess, the most, the best way to do it. But the council did support it, so I guess we need to figure out a way to get this budget passed.
What do you think about the, if we pass it as amended tonight, leaving edit as it is, setting a special meeting at the end of?
Well, can we re-vote on the exact same thing?
We can do the reduction.
We can do the reduction.
Well, yeah, we can do the reduction, and that's before the November first.
Well, but I'm saying, we voted to leave it as is, as a council, and it failed. Can we vote on the exact same thing again?
Please, a motion to reconsider on the table.
Oh.
So, Lisa, what do you think about that?
Pardon me?
I'm in on the motion.
You need a second?
Motion to reconsider, Nathan's second.
He rescinded it.
Okay. But, excuse me, just a second, I'm so sorry. I wanna make sure I have the right one, okay?
Well, right now, it's mostly reconsider the amended budget. It does not include the changes to edit at this point. That motion has to be.
I don't know if I have an opinion for that.
Okay.
Hold on, but hold on.
Wait, I wanna make sure I have the right pages here, okay? Will you help me with this, please? Okay. Because I got. Did it, so I thought there was a vote to amend it.
That was for the YMCA.
That was a white state.
But there wasn't a vote to amend the edit?
No. So, we're gonna go back with forty-nine million, eight hundred and forty-four, correct?
Thirty point.
Pardon me?
Thirty point, yes.
Okay. And I'm going to remove page thirty-one and thirty-two, correct?
Those will be the originals, right.
No, thirty-one and thirty-two are the ones that had everything zeroed out. So, now I'm putting thirty, the originals back in, correct?
Right.
I'm leaving page twenty-two in, correct?
So far.
Yes, all right.
So, we're just voting on the same thing again?
Actually, we're voting on the motion to reconsider, is that correct?
Just a second.
Bless this time out. I'm pretty sure a motion to reconsider can only come from somebody who's changed their mind.
I just don't know if anyone has.
And I don't think anybody has.
I mean, I'm all about extending our meetings and everything, but I just, I feel like.
So.
It would've been nice if people responded to the email.
Well, we shouldn't have these discussions in an email.
Well, I prefer to have discussions in a public meeting. I prefer to.
Then I'm gonna say, well, I disagree, that's where I'm at.
So, drop dead date's November first, you could pass it tonight, and then you could amend it before November first. You could not do anything tonight.
Well, but we've already passed on the first and second, right?
Right.
Yeah, it's just a.
We can table it, we can table it.
So, that table until.
Till Scott's here to break the tie. Till Scott's here to break the tie.
Overtime.
Well, I guess, and that's my next question. I mean, if you're gonna meet after November twenty-second, are there any planned vacations?
Any night when they go? Our next meeting?
Because.
Not on the fifteenth, well, they're gone.
You'll be gone the fifteenth?
No, not the fifteenth, I'm just making sure. Oh, actually, I will be gone the next meeting. Because I plan my trip after the.
I wanted to make sure.
Right, budget, yeah, I'll be gone.
You'll be gone the fifteenth?
But you can't do a motion to reconsider.
I know.
Taylor will come back to this and we'll give her the people's.
You want to table this until later in the meeting, please, people.
I have a motion to table this, to bring it up later on in the meeting, so we can let these four folks out there.
So, would that be a motion to amend and make it item twenty-three?
Second.
No, we're tabling it till later in the meeting, correct?
I don't know if there's a difference between changing the agenda.
You're just gonna table it and bring it off the table.
Okay. So, I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
Sure.
I got a motion, second any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to new business, which Larry, I think you're gonna be presenting. Interlocal cooperation agreement for the implementation of curbside recycling services for certain municipalities that name areas of Clark County solid waste management.
So, if I may.
You may.
If everybody else is here for him, and I'm gonna have to be here no matter what, you wanna move this to the night? Because I'm going to tell you, you don't even have to pass this, and you may wanna talk about it. I'm going nowhere.
Why would we not wanna pass a recycling?
He tried.
So, this is the standard interlocal cooperation agreement regarding the curbside recycling. But what I have an obligation to explain to you is you do not have to be a part of curbside recycling. Effective January, or excuse me, June of two thousand seventeen, there's no more mandatory recycling. And as you noted on there, Charlestown doesn't participate. So, as your attorney, I'm obligated to tell you, you either can choose to enter into this, be a part of it, curbside fees, it's gonna be assessed to the residents of the city of Jeffersonville, or you can choose not to.
Well, I will tell you as vice chair of the Solid Waste Board that we've got a lot of people in the city of Jefferson that recycle.
I understand. I just have an obligation to tell you what the law is.
Would be an extra fee associated?
No, it's a thing.
It's the same fee, it's thirty-four dollars, but you don't have to.
So, why is this before us today?
Well, because the agreement has expired.
Okay, so do we wanna redo the agreement?
That's the question.
And if we vote no, then does the thirty-four dollar fee get waived for everybody? Or do everybody still have to pay the fee?
That's the question I would have to.
You don't have to pay the fee, because you're not participating in the program.
Yeah, it's a volunteered fee.
It's a volunteer fee.
Regardless.
It's not on your tax bill?
It's on your tax bill.
Yeah, but if you're not participating, you don't, the citizens don't pay. So, they don't get the.
Oh, you're saying if the city does not participate?
Sure. You have your right, you have the option to implement your own program. But there's no mandatory requirement that you have curbside recycling anymore. In the old days.
But I tell you, everybody in Jeff just about recycles. Every has success in those ninety-six gallon cans.
And I'm just, I'm just obligated to tell you that, guys.
This is lower, your tax bill, thirty-four dollars a year, or is that what?
We're keeping the same.
It's a thirty-four dollar fee.
A yearly fee, monthly fee?
Yearly.
Okay. But then recycling would stop. If I could reduce your sewer bill thirty-four dollars, I would explore that option, but that's obviously not the case, so.
So, this is if, whether or not we wanna continue recycling.
That's correct.
Okay.
Or we can consider doing it ourselves.
You wanna add another service? We just zeroed it.
I've just given you an option. I've just given you an option.
I'll pay thirty-four dollars.
I'm sure we are probably the largest payer into the program. Maybe there's some things about it we don't like, I don't know. I'm just saying there is, there would be an option for us to opt out and do our own recycling. Is that true or not?
That is correct.
Sure, that's all, just.
Well, I do attend those meetings every month. And we do not get any complaints. Him, their eco-environmentals on the trucks, they have the contract for recycling. Of course, Deb reports to the board. The, I mean, we don't get any complaints from the service that's being provided. And actually, the contract is cheaper now than what it had been before, so.
The city doesn't pay anything, it's a user.
It's a user, it's a property-based fee. I mean, and it's a, and it's a good program, but I mean, I have that obligation.
Right now, if the user-based fee, the city doesn't pay out of the. So, if we, this is. So, okay, so is car insurance. So, if we decide to do it ourselves, then all of a sudden, we're creating expense, we gotta buy a truck, we have to hire people to do recycling.
I just kinda, I don't know how many households we have, but it's roughly a million and a half dollars. If each household's paying thirty-four dollars for one year, it's about a million and a half dollars per year, so. I mean, I don't, it would take an infusion of capital and maintenance, I don't know.
All your constituents have the opposite. You said it's car insurance.
Yeah.
Everybody downtown drives a Ford.
No, all of them don't own their homes either.
But I don't know if I have.
It's on your tax bill whether or not you use the service.
One of the things I have seen a lot of the recyclables go to the landfill still. That they're asking you to wash out bottles and put all this out into recyclables. Matter of fact, I was even wondering, does the truck still come around? But they were saving all this stuff and everything, and there's no market for it. So, when there's no market for it, where does it go? It goes to the landfill.
Does the.
Now, we're still gonna have to pay that fee regardless of whether we keep the recycling program or not. So, do we institute our own recycling or continue to pay? What do we pay for our recyclers?
Thirty-four dollars for any property owner in the city.
Now, I'm talking about to the people that pick up the recycling, that take it.
It's a private business.
No, it's the Clark County Waste Management. What does the town of Clarksville do? Do they have a third party that comes in and does it, or do they just not operate it at all?
Charleston, Clarksville.
Oh, I'm sorry, Charleston.
Jeffersonville, Clarksville, Sellersburg.
Well, Charleston, the recycling is up there, they have all those dumpsters out, because it's located now in Charlestown. So, they come in and they bring, they bring the recyclables to the.
To the waste management district.
Yes, yes.
And they'll pay the thirty-four dollars.
Well, in an effort to move us along.
Yeah, I was about to.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the, this contract and continue the way it is operating now.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second to approve the interlocal cooperation agreement for the curbside recycling. Any further discussion?
I have a question. Is there any changes from last, the last meeting?
No.
It's gonna say, okay, thank you.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Now, we will move on to, oh, okay, I think Les is presenting this. Brian said that he wasn't involved in the drafting, so he's gonna let you present it, but you did send a copy to him or?
He's aware of the agreement, in terms of the agreement. I'm gonna hand you, I know you had one in your package, there was a slight change. A little slight change.
So, you want us to take this one out?
Yeah, take that one out.
Better revision today for purposes of clarification, so.
Oh, that's a lot of clarification. Oh, that's only like two pages. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, there is two documents.
Basically, as you're aware, uh, there is the issue of, as we discussed earlier, um, the county, um, distribution of income tax, uh, dollars, if you recall last year, um, there was legislation passed by the Indiana General Assembly, that basically, the effect was, or the intent was, for the county to recapture, uh, some of its lost levy, that it, that it, uh, lost several years ago, to make up for that, the legislation was passed, um, in fact, uh, all the local units of government did not oppose that legislation, uh, and the, the intent of the legislation was, was to get the county back up where they should have been, well, DLGF has interpreted that legislation as not really doing that, uh, that the county is still going to be short, um, so, uh, we have discussed with Clarksville and the other governmental entities to try to make up that difference, I can tell you that based on our estimates for two thousand nineteen, the county would be short four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars, um, that's where, if the legis, legislation would be interpreted by DLGF like the intent of it was, the county would have additional four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars, so we have in front of you is an interlocal agreement between all the governmental entities, Jeffersonville, Clarksville, Sellersburg, Charlestown, Utica, and Borden, that would basically, uh, agree to make up that, um, that gap or that loss, uh, based on the two thousand nine distribution for the city of Jeffersonville, that would be two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars of less edit money that we would, uh, capture, and to put that in perspective, assuming that the, the county decides that they wanna impose a new tax, that being the jail tax at the maximum, you would see a distribution of, 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 uh, income tax going from approximately two point four million dollars down to, uh, six hundred thousand dollars, so you would lose nearly one point nine million dollars of your income tax if the county decides they wanna impose a new tax, of that being the jail tax, so, we have negotiated with the other governmental entities, we've discussed this with Brian Luntford, who supports, uh, working out an agreement, it was never his intent, I believe, to, for the county to get more dollars than what they were just trying to recapture, uh, unfortunately, DLGF has interpreted that legislation differently, so the interlocal agreement you have in front of you is for the next three years, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and two thousand twenty-one, if you go to paragraph G, that is what changed a little bit, uh, from the earlier version, which basically describes how we're going to determine what the county is going to receive, um, there's a formula that we will use, um, again, because everything right now is based on estimates, um, give or take a few thousand dollars, but, under this scenario, we believe that Jeffersonville would end up, uh, losing another two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. As opposed to one point nine million dollars, I didn't do very well in math, but.
And that would be for just three years as opposed to indefinitely?
Yes, yes, if, if the county decides they wanna impose a new tax, uh, that would, the tax would be indefinite, a couple of things to point out in the interlocal agreement, if for some reason the county would impose the new tax at any point, now or over the three years of the, of the agreement, this is null and void, and if, if we would pay our two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, or whatever that was, after they've imposed a tax, we would get a credit or a refund for the money that we had paid.
And because of the phase in of that change, then that two hundred and ninety-eight thousand should decrease next year, and then decrease the year, the next year after that?
Les, on page one, it still has four years.
Well, because it technically, I think, goes to twenty, it only, it only affects three years of distributions of the data.
And speak with. I'm sorry. There was discussed that, me and you had a discussion about if somebody else refuses to sign it, i.e. Clarksville or Sellersburg, are we gonna?
We play the, we will pay the.
Yes.
Under this agreement, the city of Jeffersonville pays their pro-rata share based upon the total number of entities that agree, so if, and like Les, I'm at the Jefferson High School with any number of accounts, if you know math at all, however, if the, if it was a hundred dollars, and everybody agrees to pay it out, and our shares are thirty-six dollars of the hundred, well, someone who's supposed to pay twelve dollars doesn't pay, and we would pay thirty-six percent of it well, if the rest of the, so, we're gonna pay the lion's share.
Has any other government entity agreed to this?
You are, you are the first, Clarksville meets tomorrow night.
Just 'cause your meeting fell first.
Just 'cause your meeting fell, this was, this was negotiated, this was put together last week.
But, it's still better than one point nine million per year indefinitely.
But if we pass this, we're on the hook for one hundred percent of this, and everybody else.
Well, we can always.
I think that, I think there's good faith, uh, at least from Clarksville and the county in, in moving forward with this. I don't know, I don't know about any of the other places, but.
I can speak for Clarksville, there's a good.
Is it?
Yes, yeah, I, I, I can only speak for Clarksville, but.
And they're the second biggest.
Yes.
Right, and I think that even the, even the county, I think, even talking with one of the county council members, they believe that they'll be able to go through the legislature next year and get a correction for all of this anyway, so we may not even, it may not be applicable for three years.
Brian Luntford believes that, that the next session, they can fix this.
Because it's a technical correction, they can get it corrected.
And the mayor, and the mayor's confident, he's spoken with members of the county council, that there are at least five votes in the county council to adopt this.
And not a new tax?
Not a new tax.
Do we have a resolution number?
None.
But, can you repeat that? What you just said about the mayor?
The ma, the mayor, uh, has spoken with a majority of the county council, in which they would support this agreement as opposed to a new tax.
Last time question, is there, is there a window of time that the county has to enact this tax?
There is.
Is it this year, or they do it next year, or the year after?
There is, and I do not know the answer, answer to that.
It was my understanding that at least for it to be enacted for next year, it'd have to be by November first of this year.
I would assume, because that's the budget.
But, I don't know about.
They're meeting October twenty-second, I read.
Yeah.
Heather, I was thinking that, um, all our, uh, tax dollars, those, those dollars that are payroll tax dollars, were in one, distributed in one pot of money, and then we carve it out, the boy gets so much, and then Ed gets so much.
There's five.
It's, it's defined that way, then did it specifically say edit is, it's cutting our edit, or is it, could have cut others?
It's affecting the edit dollars.
Only?
Yes.
Is that because of our choice?
No.
Okay, thank you.
DLGF.
It's, it's how they, um, distribute edit dollars is different than how they distribute padjet, and padjet dollars.
It's the resolution number nine.
Nine.
Motion to approve resolution, or, sorry, eighteen R nine.
Second.
Got a motion, the second passed, two thousand eighteen R nine, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, sing if I was saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Grooves cross.
Okay, Les, you have, uh, an ordinance changing the zoning map designation of certain tract of property located at forty-four oh six Helen Road, and fully described and attached to today from R one M three.
I'm trying to conserve paper, and I have a copy on both sides, and I get disorganized here. This is, uh, a rezoning application that comes to you with a favorable recommendation of the planning commission, the property is located at four four zero six Helen Road, uh, the petitioner is requesting that the property be rezoned, uh, from R one, uh, which is residential, to multifamily M three. The applicant is Brandon Denton, and I believe Mr., if I saw him, or, yes, Mr. Denton is here, um, if you have any questions, the proposed development is a fifteen-building multifamily development with a total of three hundred and sixty units. And I believe a development plan was approved.
No.
Was not.
Was not.
It was not.
Were they not, was this the one, was this the one?
This is the one that they tabled.
So, it was, the rezoning was recommended, but it is, the development plan is still being debated.
Right.
So, the rezoning is sort of different from the development plan.
It was not, it was not unanimous.
Yeah.
The, the issue with the development plan was, uh, variances, uh, density was higher than what a M three standard density is, uh.
Not much amenities?
Uh, yeah, the amenities have covered parking, but it cost fifty percent, they had zero. There's one more, there are three different variants there.
Keep in mind, just for the rezoning, you're gonna know whether or not the property is appropriate for those listed uses under M three, the development plan may never get approved.
And.
Did you, is development?
Development plan is not before tonight.
Right.
No, just the.
It's just, you're just doing rezoning.
So, then would those variances need to go to, uh?
Those were. There were, there were some waivers, and there were some variances, and every, every, I believe everything was tabled at the last meeting, except the rezoning.
Okay. All we deal with is zoning.
Well, as far as the zoning goes, I mean, this is right next to another M three parcel, it's kind of what's growing in that area. We could have that debate, that was, was there?
And I keep hearing, we need more housing.
Well, this is a public hearing.
Yeah.
Does anybody talk to Scott Hoffman's, with his opinion as well?
No, unfortunately, I don't want to.
It's his district, for his own best.
And that was gonna be one of the issues I was gonna bring up, I know they haven't even presented it, but my, my preference would be to table it until, to hear from Scott, I, I voted against it on planning and zoning, but there was, obviously, it did pass, but I don't know where Scott is on this.
I'm gonna go ahead and open up public hearing, and then if you have any additional questions, or, we can do that.
It'll be ordinance sixty-one.
I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing, uh, does anybody wish to speak for or against the property located at forty-four zero six Helen Road, uh, it's, the zoning request is going from an R one to an M three, is there anybody here wish to speak, uh, for or against the property, please come for, state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, I'm John Campbell with Heritage Engineering, um, I'm representing Brandon Denton with Denton Floyd Real Estate Group, and my address is, um, six zero three Northshore Drive, Jeffersonville, Indiana, four seven one three zero, so, we did, um, attend the planning commission meeting and present kind of a combination of a rezoning and a development plan, um, in that presentation of the rezoning, we did talk about the location of the property, and its proximity to kind of a completely redevelopment area that's occurring there at Herb Lewis Road and Ten Street, and as you all are aware, um, the new Kroger has opened, there are both the Jeffersonville Commons Commercial Development, as well as the, uh, planned development across the street, that it has both commercial and, uh, hopefully, a medical component at some point in the near future, um, we do have directly to the north of our side, some existing commercial zoning that we have bought, I think those properties are being used as single-family residences today, but it is owned for commercial use, um, there is one church there on an institutional zoning, and then, uh, as, as previously mentioned, we are directly abutting some, uh, M three multifamily there, um, directly to the east, so we've kind of identified this area, and per the comp plan, it does refer to it as a mixed, as ideal for a mixed use, so while our actual development site is not a mixed use, we are part of the bigger picture of a mixed use that's occurring there, with the existing, um, multifamily, commercial, and then the office and, and medical uses there, as to the development plan, we did present a development plan, um, I can go into more detail about that, but I think the, that our takeaway from the planning commission was there were a couple items that we need to go back and take a look at, um, which we have committed to do, so that we had requested that plan be tabled until we can discuss some access concerns that were raised by neighbors with your Public Works, Andy Crouch, as well as kind of relook at our layout and, and revisit any opportunities to potentially include some covered parking, if, if we feel like that is certainly a component that needs to be included, and take a look at that, so with that said, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, um, again, Brandon Denton is here, and he is also available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to step aside, because I'm still in public hearing, so if anybody, is there anybody here that else that needs to speak for or against this? Please speak your name and address for the record, please.
Richard Eklund, sixteen oh eight Flintlock Drive. I would say good evening, but I think we've moved on past that, so, I attended the planning and zoning, uh, meeting, uh, but I stand before you as just a taxpayer in the city of Jeffersonville, um, and I wanna state that, uh, you know, in my travels, going to some of the city meetings and observing what's going on in our city, that I have the highest regard for the developer, I think he's done, and is doing some tremendous things in the city, uh, my concerns, uh, regarding this particular development is, as you can see, it was originally zoned residential, and I don't know what all of the procedures are for that, but I am sure that there were factors, that, you know, that determined that it was better as residential than multifamily, and when I attended the meeting, even though I don't live in that area, like I said, I am a taxpayer, and it was, uh, I think, some concerns were raised concerning the current infrastructure in that area right now, uh, for development to take place, and, uh, the road, Herb Lewis Road seemed to be a major issue, as a matter of fact, even the applicant agreed during the planning and zoning meeting that the current condition of Herb Lewis Road was inadequate for what they were proposing to do, um, and I was kind of, kind of surprised by the chairman of the planning and zoning, uh, kind of made this statement, I can't really repeat it word for word, but it was like, well, we all know that if, uh, we approve this and they put the apartments out there, the city's gonna have to do something to address the road, which to me, I, I'm not the most logical guy, but I mean, um, aren't we kind of putting the cart before the horse? And it seems like we're being pushed, um, we've had a study done in the city saying we're severely underserved with housing, and so, uh, when these things are coming up, it seems like we're very eager to get them approved, but I would say that it doesn't seem like we're having to go out and beg developers to come forward to make development, uh, I think it's kind of, Mr. Pruitt was at the meeting, and he voiced the fact that we've gotten an overwhelming response for developers jumping up and wanting to develop properties and supply, uh, the demand that was reported in this study, so, my concern is, if Herb Lewis Road is inadequate, and it's gonna have to be addressed, who's gonna pay for that? I didn't hear any mention, I mean, uh, I'm sitting here tonight, we're struggling, trying to get our budget covered, and we're hearing about funds that we're spending, everything we've got coming in, there's all kinds of projects going on in the city, how many financial obligations is, is the city and the council prepared to take on, uh, you know, with the county shortfall now that we're dealing with, we don't know what the results of that are gonna be, we don't even know if, uh, you know, we're talking about fire, adding firefighters, are we gonna be able to sustain our bit, sustain our budget on the long term, and it's just my experience that to build a road, it's kind of expensive, so where's that money gonna come from? So where's that money gonna come from? And my last comment is, living in the city, there's a lot of roads I travel every day and it looks to me like we need to be concentrating on maybe improving some of the roads we've already got before we put ourselves in a position where we're gonna have to literally maybe build a new road or transform an existing road into something that's gonna be extremely costly. So thank you very much.
Is there anybody else? Did you have something?
Good night. Chris Law?
Please.
Hi, I do, my name's Brandon Denton, I'm with Denton Floyd Real Estate Group and I do wanna, I do appreciate the gentleman's concerns. I just wanted to be clear that we're up here today just for the rezoning. I feel strongly that the multifamily zoning is very appropriate for that area regardless of the development plans approved, our development plan. That will be done in a separate session, of course. Anything that we heard last week on our development plan that caused us to table it is not really a concern. We feel confident that we can come to an agreement with everybody based on the comments that we got. But again, we think that this area is completely appropriate for the M3 zoning that we're asking for tonight. Regarding this comment about who's gonna pay for it, I do want to make sure that we all realize that right now that the property sits as a farm with one single-family home on it. We're gonna be putting a multimillion dollar project in there, which is gonna really greatly increase the property tax basis for the city of Jeff. So again, it's gonna bring in additional tax dollars, more funding for firemen, police department, et cetera, et cetera. So we think it makes very, a lot of sense in that respect. Thank you. How many acres is the property? I'm sorry. How many acres? It's approximately 18 acres.
Is this close to where the Ellingsworth Commons is going?
It is. It's actually across the street from Herb Lewis Road where Ellingsworth Commons is going.
So we approved all that and that's the ingress and egress is to Herb Lewis Road?
That's correct, yes. And to John Campbell's point, we are very cognizant of the fact that there may be a need to widen Herb Lewis Road and we're gonna be meeting with the city and be in some, several talks with the city to make sure that whatever we come up with the final development plan, it's gonna, the roadway at the entrance point and exit point will be appropriate for the density.
I apologize for not being at the last planning commission meeting. I think it's a great project.
Thank you.
I'm always an advocate for not pricing out certain groups, so putting covered things over parking spots raises the rent value more than you intended. I would, at the next planning commission meeting, I'll be in support of that.
Thank you.
Of not having that.
And to the covered garages question or issue, quite frankly, our experience with covered garages are that people end up using them for storage bins instead of parking their cars, so you kind of defeat the purpose of having them in the first place. They're also a maintenance nightmare. So we've seen very, very many Class A, very high-end developments in Louisville especially that do not have covered parking. And you still get the demographic and the clientele of tenant that you, that you really want in there, but you also, to your point, can keep their rents at a reasonable level. If we did have to put covered parking in there, the rents would have to be adjusted up and again, may put us out of the marketplace for a reasonable rent for that complex.
I do want to bring us back to zoning only.
Okay.
So is there any, is that all you had?
Yes.
Is there anybody here that wish to speak for or against this? Okay, then I'm officially close public hearing.
Motion to approve 1800R 61.
Second.
I got a motion of second to pass 20180R 61. Any further discussion?
Yep, I have some. Something to keep in mind, you have 18 acres at R1, that's about 54, between 54 and 60 units, houses, which generate probably about 120 cars, which would probably be about 200 residents. If you do M3, you get about 360 houses, so about 300 more housing units. You get about 200 and, or 520 vehicles, about 400 more vehicles driving up and down there and probably 800 people. And it, and with, with the road situation, and I ask quick, if you were to do a residential with slower development, there's more time to gain the infrastructure speed, with apartment, it's fast. So I just wanted to share some of the concerns I had within why I voted no on planning and zoning, I'll vote no today.
Anybody else? Seeing none, all those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Murphy, let me have an ordinance changing, the zoning map destination of certain tract of property located at 927 Indiana Avenue, fully described, Exhibit A, from C2 to a C1.
This is property that's located in the Gateway Development. That redevelopment is entered into a development agreement with Hogan Real Estate to develop that property. There's a portion of the property that's being requested rezoned from a C2 to C1. And this comes to you with unanimous favorable recommendation from the planning commission and I believe we do have representatives from Hogan Development here if you have any questions. This is also a public hearing as well.
Does anybody have any questions before I open up public hearing? At this time, I'm gonna officially open up the public hearing for the property located at 927 Indiana Avenue, change, for zoning change request from a C2 to a C1. Is there anybody here that wish to speak for or against the zoning?
Alan Applegate, 428 Meggs Avenue, on behalf of Hogan Development, we will-
Stand up straight, sir. Don't touch it. There's a new one, you can't even touch it now. It's just standing right there. We can pick you up.
We will, I will not make a formal presentation, but hold ourselves out to answer any questions that you all have in the interest of time. Mr. Leonard with Hogan Development is here with us and you usually don't hear that from me. But we will, we're going to rely on the unanimous.
So anybody else that wish to speak for or against? Then I will officially close public hearing and I feel warmly excited about getting this going, so.
Motion to approve 1800R 61.
I wouldn't normally ask if Dustin had any questions or problems, but we all know he would let us know.
Yes, he said very happy, I just asked him. So I had a motion, I have a second. And a second, so was there any further discussion? We'll note that Dustin's very happy. So all those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Madam President, I wasn't trying to get on anybody, it's just that the sound people came in and redid it, all the sound and we have, no, I'm not, we have an equalizer and it just, if you stand up straight, you'll be able to speak through it. I'm sorry.
We're high-tech.
Pardon? Alan, you're welcome to go because you've been approved. I would leave.
Just like my mom. Stand up straight and shut up.
That's right. You got that right. Thank you, sir. All right. Now we have ordinance changing, the zoning map request, destination of a certain tract of property located at 4219 Middle Road. It is going from R1 to C2. Let the council note that this was requested to be tabled several times by the applicant and at the last meeting, Nathan did reach out before the meeting to see if they went to table what the desire was, nobody got back to our plan director, so, and nobody was there to present, so we didn't have anything to go on, we had no idea, so it was passed on to us with, with no recommendation. And I don't think anybody's here tonight, is there? Oh, there is, okay. Les, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, yeah, this is a rezoning that comes to you with a, as you mentioned, no recommendation with the planning commission. The applicant is Sprigler Company, asking to rezone this property that is situated and located at 4219 Middle Road. To rezone it from R1, low-density residential to C2 medium to large-scale general commercial. This is property that is located at very near the intersection of Middle Road and Port Road and I believe Mr. Sprigler is here.
Hello, my name is Chad Sprigler with the Sprigler Company. I apologize for my absence last week. I was, earlier part of last week, I was out sick and Nathan did reach out to me and I spoke to him after the fact and we did table this several times before because we were trying to work with Nathan and the port on some different, some different items there. So I'd like to still present tonight if it's possible. As everyone's well aware, that that corner is a very hot-trafficed area. The site is located, it's the small home and the trailer there that once sat there on the corner that burnt down a few years ago. I brought a map, the port map, if that would help everyone to kind of take a look at it. So it's on the corner, closest to, so everything on the outside is in white, is the port map. This, this property sits outside of, obviously, the port. All three corners are currently zoned C2. The property that we, the zoning property is zoned C2 that we actually have under contract as well and then the main corner is zoned C1. We ask to do the zone change now for, before we can go back and go ahead and close on the property and come back with a formal plan, development plan and sit down with Nathan with a more formal plan at this point, but just before we can go ahead and move forward with our contract, ask for, for to go ahead and get the proper zoning. I'm not sure why it was never zoned properly to C2. Everything around is C2 and currently, you know, just, I'm not sure why that spot was R1. I can ask any questions at this time?
If there's anybody has any questions, I'm gonna go ahead and officially open up public hearing.
Okay.
So at this time, I'm officially open up public hearing. Is there anybody here that wish to speak against the zoning request moving from an R1 to a C2 for the property located at 4219 Middle Road? Seeing none, I'll officially close public hearing. Does the council have any questions?
I'll just say that I haven't had any residents contact me about this, but I can say is that we have discussed, obviously, Ellingsworth Farms, that will eventually in the next five to six years, that, once that is fully developed, will, will exit out of Middle Road and we've already slightly addressed or talked about that issue. I don't know if there will be much of a difference in terms of traffic going, exiting onto Middle Road with this property being, going from an R1 to a C2. So I mean, I, I think that, I guess I'll just say that, that I haven't really heard any complaints.
The only thing about this property is it's right there at Port and Middle, that's a four-way stop.
Yep.
That will probably never be anything but a four-way stop.
Yep, that's correct.
So if there's anybody that, that's probably one of the big, the, the single, biggest place I've ever thought we should have a stoplight.
Yes.
Because we put them everywhere else, but we can't put one there because it's not up to the city.
Multiple council members, myself included, have pursued that and been, it's just not an option.
That's an intersection that's controlled by the, the Port Commission, the State's Port Commission and that's not what they want to see there and they haven't changed their mind and.
I will say that it is exciting to have, to have that property potentially developed. Because it is such a high-traffic area, you have a lot of people that are coming to visit the port, things like that, I think it would be nice to have.
Do you, do you have control of the property directly behind it? It's kind of wedged between Port Road and the railroad track?
The site, the parcel we have, two parcels we have, the main corner and the trucking company to the left. Ford actually controls the triangle piece currently, they bought it at auction about a year ago.
Gotcha.
It'll be, actually landlord of this property.
That's what I noticed, yeah. Okay. Motion to approve 1800R 62.
Second. Is it 62 or 63? 63.
Oh, I'm sorry, 63?
Got a motion of second, passed 20180R 63. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
So then, well, the next one we need to-
Thank you.
Finally, Kim, an ordinance amending 20180R 23, an ordinance fixing salaries appointed officers for all departments in the city of Jeff and Clark County, Indiana, 2019. Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, forgot what I was gonna talk about now, so. Okay, what we did was we just basically prepared the ordinance based upon the budget, so I'm not gonna rehash a couple sections because I really don't want to spend another hour talking about fire and police, so y'all can just kind of let us know later. But on page one, the only thing that we removed was now that we have the salary pay grade system, that folks can no longer have a cap, we just removed that section on page one. On page two, a new title is the coordinator of code enforcement. That was an increase of the pay grade, no increase in pay. And then when we get to the fire department, we currently have 83 firefighters and I guess I'm just gonna need a little bit of direction from you guys once you make your decision on how you're gonna move forward, whether I need to add the six to 89. And I guess then that'll be decided once you all meet again, okay? The only other change is in the fire department on page three and it's reflective of what's in their current contract, is the captain is going to 21.5 percent, lieutenant goes to 16.5 and sergeant goes to 11.5. Under human resources, the administrative assistant, two, is, it was 85 percent and we changed that to 80. Heather wanted that to be an even number to kind of coincide with all the other, wastewater does the 80/20 with most folks except one physician, so we changed that. You'll notice a lot of the titles, we've kind of cleaned up to make them a little more representative of actually, you know, current titles in the market and a little more reflective of what people are doing. And tried to make a lot of those alphabetical instead of having a green space crew leader and a landscape crew leader. It's just kind of, you'll notice that they're all crew leader, crew leader, manager, 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 to try to make them a little more of an alphabetical order and to have them make a little more sense for clarity and to be able to find them easier. On page four, under police, again, we currently have 88, we currently have 86, so two are in process of being hired, so 88 police officers, if we add the three according to budget, then that's gonna be 91 and then you again can direct HR on where you want that number posted or indicated in the ordinance. According to their contracts as well, the major has gone to 26.5, captain to 21.5, lieutenant 16.5, sergeant 11.5, corporal 6.5, senior patrolman 3.5. And those were all 0.5 percent increases from the current ordinance. Towards the bottom, under wastewater admin, that was an AA1 and that's currently an AA2. And then the only other new position, I forgot, I did not highlight, is under, is already in the budget, was under planning and zoning, he's hiring an AA2. Let's skip right past that, I'm sorry about that.
So you do not have the number of firefighters in there. Do I understand that correctly?
Correct, yes. Well, because we've really never, we took the numbers out, since I've been managing the ordinance for like, I think, maybe four years, five years, I don't recall ever having the numbers in there.
We just had a bit of discussion about it, so I was looking for it, but it's not in here, so.
No, because we've never had the numbers and I did not receive a message until Friday that you all were looking at what in the numbers and I've already had the ordinance prepared and submitted to the clerk.
I didn't ask for the numbers, I was just trying to be, understand that.
Yeah, so that was understanding on my part, I assume that the numbers were.
Okay.
Or is, we, we had talked about what other places could trump the question. Could we ever decide on making any changes on what can be compensated for various boards and things?
That's what I was, yeah, I'll let you bring that up, but I do have one question. Kim, do we need to reflect it in here? Our question is how, is to where the board members that are planning for the board, they get paid for the meeting if they attend. If they don't attend, they don't get paid because the majority of the boards, if they don't, they don't get, they don't get paid. But we still have some of the boards that they're not coming, they're still being paid. We want it to be the same across the board, that it's based on their attendance for payment.
So you'd like for me to add that somewhere in your, under section two, Jean?
Yes, to make that clear, because there's been some misinterpretations of how.
I guess it could be authorization to pay a stipend per meeting attended, based upon payment.
It would be $100 per meeting. Because I don't know what you two are talking about, it says annually, it should be 100 per meeting.
The only issue, the only issue is that if we had, I think, one of, some of it got changed was some of them had quite a few meetings and the amount of money that we had lotted for, for them, it wasn't near enough. And so...
I mean, that's the thing is...
And, I mean...
I don't know how these be reflected, but for me is if they show up, they get paid. If they don't attend a meeting, then they don't get paid.
To make it, they get paid one a month.
To make it even because you got some boards that are and you got some that aren't. The majority are, it's by their attendance, I don't know how we need to do that. And then I, I know, I know Parks Authority doesn't, they don't get paid for Parks Authority, Parks Commission. Is there any other ones that...
Do they submit an attendance sheet for payment?
Most of them, yeah, and they sign.
I took over, but that's how the process had always been.
Okay.
You know what you do?
Do we have an attendance issue?
Not all the time, no. One of the, I'm sorry for answering because I know what the two, one of the issues was me getting the sign-in sheet back from that department. And we've been working on that and finally starting to get that in hand. There has been, and that was one of them because the claims, we went ahead and submitted it before. I missed June, July, and August and I asked several times for it. Finally got them. But they may miss one or, you know, there's never more than two or three meetings. But it's up to you all, I mean, I inherited it, that's how it was being done, that's how it totally was done.
Should we consider maybe taking away it being annually and break that down?
Well, the problem is, they have just three meetings a month sometimes.
Okay, yeah.
And they just have to be that all boards' stipends are based upon their attendance. That's, I don't know, that's less than my...
But I think what Mickey's trying to say though, too, and to her point, is so if they get paid annually for something, if you attend one meeting in a whole year, you're going to get paid the full amount?
No, 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 no. Well, yeah, basically, yeah. But some of the times they have three and four meetings a month.
Right.
So if we put per meeting, it's going to be more than what's budgeted.
And that's to be in place if there, because hopefully, I know, we may have that discussion tonight, but hopefully we'll get to the point because we have several great boards that they're not being compensated.
I can't have any boards that was just by oversight or...
They do, when they have interviews and stuff.
It's kind of cyclical with those two, depends upon the hiring process.
Is there any other questions?
Are there any additions or revisions to...
Well, we were just, on this half of the, on this half of the council table, we were discussing potentially some wording of having, having everything being per meeting, but then saying, you know, there will not be any compensation for more than 24 meetings per year. So like having it capped to avoid paying for additional meetings that are not distributed as one option, so we're not worried about how much money, we're not having enough money to pay everybody. I just remember that, that was something we had discussed in the budget hearings and we had talked about having more consistency. And I, I mean, whether we consistently want to not give, provide a stipend per meeting or not, and, or whether we do, I just think it makes sense to have a consistent policy. Agree.
I wouldn't think that the committees are just meeting to meet, you know, and they're not going to meet just for this stipend.
For kids.
Most people on the committees are, you know, have a reason to be on that. I would, I could support what you just said, Count. And I would encourage us to add those two that we mentioned, Parks and...
Public Arts.
At the same level as most of, as the others are.
Which looks like 100 per meeting? Is that what I'm seeing, 100 per meeting?
Yeah.
Or maybe 40?
Just for clarification, if you're a council member on these boards, you nod your hands.
I mean, I'm seeing nine, 100.
For clarification, we're going to have to go back and add this all to the budget.
Do we have a budget for this?
No.
For what, sir?
For what we're talking about?
To add these coordinators.
Yes, well, rather than the...
To add the new ones.
Yeah.
Yes?
We do for everyone except Public Arts and Parks.
Parks. So Parks meets once per month, there's nine.
Oh, we're, we're talking about adding.
Yes.
Right, do we have budget money for that?
That's what I, I was just figuring out how much that would be.
We're up to where we...
To be fair, we don't have a budget, yes.
So that would be 7,200, 7,200 for Parks, but there are council members that serve on that, so it would actually be less than that.
Right.
And then Public Arts, how many are, serve on Public Arts?
Nine.
Nine, so it'd be, so we're...
Eight, Council members. Eight.
So we're looking at, this is a conservative number, about 15,000 if every person got the $100 every month.
Should we take that out of edit?
Well, they get paid for a meeting, but it's based, if they don't attend, they don't get paid.
Could we, on the two that's in question, could we put, instead of putting annually, put $100 monthly per meeting?
Yeah, I would say 100 per meeting, mostly once a month.
Monthly, just monthly.
Or monthly, yes. 100 per month.
If you attend.
If you attend.
If you attend.
Yeah.
Month, yeah. I would imagine this, this all comes out of the salaries, or, no, these are getting to individual budgets, right?
Individual budgets, yes.
Okay, so I'm going to add a statement, basically something, I'm going to come up with something about payment based upon attendance at said meeting. Fire merit board is going to be 100 monthly. Police merit board is going to be 100 monthly. And then I'm going to be adding Public Arts Committee, $100 per meeting, per meeting, and Parks Authority Board, $100 per meeting. Is that correct?
Is there a motion to that effect? Has anybody made a motion to that effect?
I mean, I'll make a motion to amend, would I be amending this? To amend 64 to include those changes to the board service secretary's tenure for pay.
Just, hold on a second.
Second.
Got a motion of second to amend 2018 OR 64. Do you prefer the discussion?
Just a question. Kim, that, you've gone over all your changes, is that right?
Yes, yes. Other than, like I said, I'm sorry, I forgot, planning and zoning.
So payments for these will come out of the budgets for each of those departments?
Yes, so we will have to look at the Public Arts budget and the Parks budget and increase those, refine about $7,200, my rough math is correct.
Find additional money or they'll just have to use the money they have? Well, if, the money, the money that we made budget. Because if we're trying to pass a revenue mutual budget, I don't know if we can find more money. I don't know. It's my understanding we don't have any real...
I would speak for being on the Parks Board that there is money within the budget that they could find $7,200 to cover that.
Right. And if that's where we're getting, I'm fine, but I think we should talk about that. I mean, what about the arts?
We got...
So it'll come out of the arts budget?
It'll come out of the existing budget.
The existing, okay, all right.
The budget that'll be approved.
So all those are paid?
Do you have any direction of what you want me to do for fire and police? Put in a number somewhere, leave it until you all discuss it further? Because I'll revise this...
I would ask that you put the number, like you gave us the number tonight.
Yeah, same here, they're the same.
Like it used to be before maybe you did it, it's out...
A long time ago, it was a number next to each person and we got away from that.
I think they just put the total number.
I'm going to ask it for the ring.
Okay.
I'm just asking that there's 82, 55, the total number.
Got it.
From this point, I mean, that changes, well, you, you change, we change it yearly anyway, don't we?
No, no, yeah.
That's, we can do that.
So all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
So that was for the amendment?
Right.
Right.
Well, then I'll make, I assume that was passed.
That's passed, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve 2018 OR 64, amended.
On which reading?
On the first and second.
Sir.
Okay, so I got a motion of second to pass the amended 2018 OR 64. Any further discussion? Seen none? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you all.
Appreciate your patience. Heather, an ordinance transferring certain funds within the same department.
This is further over stage. Period.
It's just a transfer, so it'll have a motion?
Second.
Got a motion?
First and second.
First and second to pass 2018 OR 65. All of the favor sign if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
All of opposed? Motion carries. Heather, we got an ordinance of additional appropriation, which would be 66.
This is all to reappropriate some reimbursements that they, that the Parks Department has received.
Motion to approve 18 OR 66, in the first and second.
Second. Got a motion of second to pass 2018 OR 66, in the first and second. Any further discussion? Seen none? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Less, the resolution allowing the City of Jeffersonville to withdraw from the Clark County building authority.
Can we already do this?
I don't believe so.
I'm sorry?
I don't believe so.
No, we haven't. According to Connie, we haven't.
Yep.
We talked about it.
According to Mr. Luntford, we haven't. I mean, we discussed it, but we never...
I think it expires soon anyhow, too, doesn't it? I don't know.
You know, in my discussions with Mr. Luntford regarding the edit issue, it was brought to my attention that we are technically, we being the city, still part of the old building authority for the old Clark County, city-county building, which is now the county building. And the statutes, statute has provision in which we can withdraw from that building authority as the county seat we are on there and this resolution would do that.
Motion to approve 18 OR 10.
Second. Got a motion of second to pass 2018 OR 10. Any further discussion?
I have a question. So do we have representation on the board? Do we appoint somebody? Have we sat in on any...
I don't believe so.
According to, according to Commissioner, she said that whoever was appointed never shows up.
Yeah.
So...
I think the last office we had was the city police in there, correct?
Yes, the evidence room.
Yeah, that was like, you know...
Well, the evidence room was actually still there until the completion of the new place department.
Yeah, that was the last room.
All of the favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All of opposed? Motion carries. Less, we have a resolution approving the tax abatement for the Masonic Building.
Really, the next two items are somewhat intertwined. You have a resolution regarding a tax abatement for the old Masonic Building or Temple on Spring Street, 509 Spring Street. The request comes from you, from Denton Floyd for that abatement. It also comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the redevelopment commission. And then also, there's a request for assistance with a facade grant that would be separate from this, I believe. Mr. Merkley is here to represent Denton Floyd, Paul Merkley. I know he is. I know there's quite a bit of information in the packets if you have any questions for him.
Thank you, Mr. Merkley. In fact, I'm thinking it must be some sort of cosmic irony for me to come here with a edit request this evening, but nevertheless, it is a project that's going to generate future property tax dollars as well as additional economic development income tax or local option income taxes. Denton Floyd is looking to rehabilitate that building to historic spec and they are looking to bring their development headquarters from Louisville to southern Indiana. In the first year, they anticipate hiring 30 employees and in year two being up to 45. The amount of edit that we project that'll generate over a 10-year period is just over $300,000. As Mr. Merkley mentioned, redevelopment approved the tax abatement. They also approved the enhancement of a parking lot at Sixth and Kentucky as well as additional sidewalk improvements. They have put, of the 50,000 requested, they put $20,000 in facade grant improvements up for that. The reason that was structured in the abatement is an alternative schedule from the stair-step-down version that you're used to, is so that the Falls Landing TIF could collect the property taxes and pay off the parking lot and sidewalks in an efficient manner. Again, as Mr. Merkley mentioned, we're here tonight for $30,000 in edit and as well as looking for successful approval of the statement of benefits and the property tax abatement resolution. Just in the interest of time, I do want to give a quick summary of the project. If you look at the total amount generated by this project just over a 10-year period, and that's the, would be approximately $776,000 and the City of Jeff contribution, now keep in mind the abatement kind of comes as a 50% split for a 10-year period, would be $517,000, leaving the total direct net revenue for the city to be $258,000 over the 10-year period. When considering the edit, that's approximately a two-and-a-half to three-year payback. The same goes for the off-site improvements in terms of the TIF payback period. So from the capital outlay to when, you know, you start to get above that hump is approximately a three-year period on both accounts.
And the investment that, that's going to be put into this building?
Is approximately $2.5 million. So I think bringing, you know, the economic impact analysis, you know, you've got high-wage professional services jobs, hopefully support the housing developments you guys have going on in downtown Jeffersonville, hotel stays, restaurants, et cetera. So the velocity of the dollar, it's certainly more than just that direct impact as well.
According to the document, it should be completed July 30th is the estimate of next year.
Oh, yes, correct, yeah, it's correct.
Less than a year completion.
Is there a separate resolution regarding the seven thousand? Just a motion of second.
Oh, okay. All right, sorry. So this is about...
So the request for the abatement came through redevelopment and passed unanimously. It is a little different with the, the 50% for 10 years instead of the stair-step, it actually works out better for the TIF, you know, collecting the tax dollars because of that. You'll notice on the attachments also that they did complete the schedule that outlines and kind of grades what they're asking for and the rubric doesn't permit that 10-year abatement. So I would be supportive. You know, we're, we're looking at, we try to rein in how much we give on abatements. We want to support projects that are, you know, high-wage, reusing existing infrastructure, which this building was a huge deal to save. And it's also a corporate headquarters for downtown Jeff, for developer that's putting a lot of money in southern Indiana, so. Motion approved 2018 OR 11. Second.
Got a motion of second passed 2018 OR 11. Any further discussion?
Still not furthered.
This is just R, right?
Seen yet? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All of opposed? Motion carries. So now we'll need...
So was the, was the redevelopment asked? Was that just through the number that was decided or...
So redevelopment usually does facade grants in the amount of $10,000. The ask was 50, we gave 20.
Just a comment about, about that, as an alternative to using edits, I'm not sure if this is available, but we have an economic development abatement fund that, that folks pay in, businesses pay in when we give them an abatement. And that fund has grown to almost $350,000.
Right.
It seems appropriate to spend it out of that for this.
Is that like an approved use?
I don't...
Does anyone know?
It's Fund 279.
There's a ordinance that's got that fund. I believe it's for economic development and redevelopment, so I...
So we could do an additional appropriation for that, out of that fund?
It would have to be on the next meeting, if that's...
I'd make a motion to approve the request from that.
So that would not be done tonight?
On second.
It would come here next week.
The actual appropriation would be the next meeting.
Right.
So we're just voting in support, and then we expect to see.
The addition of appropriation.
And in that process, we'll double-check to make sure that that's in alignment with the ordinance that.
So you all support the thirty thousand?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what my motion is. On second.
I got it.
I'm not sure what.
Two seventy-nine.
So I got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Thank you very much.
Motion carries. Okay, where are we at? Oh, we have to go back to the.
So you said that's Fund two seventy-nine, Nathan, correct? Thank you.
So the money's approved, and we just have to appropriate it?
Yes.
All right.
We have a five-minute recess?
Back to the budget.
We have two-minute recess?
Yes. Go ahead, go.
Two-minute recess, because I have to do that. I just wanted to stretch my legs a little bit. Now it's time for.
How you doing?
That, okay, so the thirty thousand facade.
Economic development, four percent higher. What we, that, what that one is, we're in town, we give, and they would count, but companies look at it like so. They have the general, and it just goes in a, we have, frankly, use that for young people. I don't know, I don't know what it is. So it's grown, that's why I don't mind it.
So that's where they become, it's kind of, and that was a resolution, you don't have to read it all, or anything in that.
Yeah, the next, next meeting, Heather, we'll bring a, a word that says.
You know, the county hasn't seen refreement. I'm hoping that they pass it, but until they don't. I just.
Here comes the thirty thousand. And so the direction of the tax abatement is, y'all approve that.
Everything was fine until he came in late. And then everybody started going along with him, because they were fine with doing the edit thing. We were on the road, we already spoke about it. He comes in.
Please let us off. You have good evening.
Well, all I need was a minute to the edit, and then we would have had it passed, but we changed it, so.
They said it, we did.
Zero at all?
You know, it would leave.
It's a lot better than it was.
Yes, it is, it is, but it's still a lot.
Look, they're gonna have to, there's a plate that keeps falling off, I don't know, that's gonna happen to somebody.
Oh, I want to go.
Oh, I know.
I think Scotty might have, and I think they so pretended they were, because they were fine with adjusting edits.
I still think, I still think.
Vicki, Larry said that I can make a motion. Since when? President of council has never been able to make a motion. Because if that was the case, I would make motions all over the freaking place. I've never been on, even when I was on president, in the last first term.
They're trying to figure out how.
They're out there figuring out something later.
That's how we do our huddles at work. We want it less than ten minutes, we stand.
It's like eighty-five degrees outside.
I gave it to Lisa, I'm on that board, so I feel, I feel appropriate bringing it up, so if she wants to, you guys will pass it. I don't really care. But we usually do a.
I don't know what you guys are talking about, I'm listening to the conversation.
But he thought that, he thought Paul worked with us this week, but it's actually next week.
That's right, yeah.
And so he scheduled it the wrong week. Well, wow, they're only like a couple hundred bucks.
I think, I think the legal advisors went over that in the hallway.
Yeah, they wild.
Wow, they're. Yeah, yeah. We flew to Stockholm, and it was like three, three ninety, three eighty.
Really, was that wild, out of Cincinnati?
Uh, yeah.
So do, when you do the wild, do you buy, buy any food, or do you pay for your luggage?
Um, we, we did.
Carry, carry your own water?
Well, we bought food in the airport, which was cheaper, and then we carried down our flight.
Vicki, I'm not gonna lie to you, there are moments when I'm going through these ordinance.
You can have the first.
Ooh.
But we were gone for.
Who?
We were never going home.
Who's the vice president? I think they call us back to.
He's an ice one.
He's all ice.
He's an ice one. I may get to eat today.
See, you all get.
I didn't realize how long it even passed, but I am.
I hate to tell you, under Robert rules, no, it is not true that the president can vote only to break the law.
Only to vote, well, they can vote.
Yeah. President can do any of that stuff. In this body.
Well, I feel like my whole council term's been alive, and I thought that Lisa could never make a motion.
Guess I can make a motion as the president of the fiscal board now. You have a Larry. Yeah, that will.
I might as well make a motion that we.
All right, this meeting is now reconvened. And we're back on the budget. So I'm gonna ask this again, because I didn't hear this. I want to hear from both attorneys, because I have never known where the president of the council can make a motion. So are you saying, according to Robert's rules, or what, that I can make a motion?
Yes. So you all have a two thousand, you adopted Robert's rules, your method of doing business, and you, under Robert's rules interpretation of their own rules, have the ability to vote on matters, therefore you are full participant, therefore you can make motions and do whatever.
It seems like the, it seems like the cause of, or at least one of the causes of differing opinions is what, how we should respond to the county's decision. It might seem to be the lesser of picking, picking something now to just have a special meeting after the county makes its decision, where we can have this discussion. I mean, I certainly, I guess I want to start with that, that option. I understand that that shortens the timeline that Heather has to submit something, but I mean, if that's what we're not.
What do you think about if we pass the budget and at the same time, schedule a special meeting for October twenty-fourth?
I don't think it, I don't think it makes sense to pass a budget just to change it in a, I mean, because then Heather can't submit it anyway if she's going to anticipate it changing.
I think that the administration's fairly confident that.
Which will then happen.
You would be changing the budget, you pass the budget as is, schedule a special meeting for October twenty-fourth to consider a reduction that may or may not be needed effective January one.
For that, I'm, I voted for the budget, so I'm, I can't answer that question of if any, if that would change anyone else's minds. I was under the opinion that it wouldn't.
And that, that motion has been voted down by this council.
To leave it as is.
So someone who voted against that motion can make a motion to reconsider.
Correct.
Or.
And if we, if we table it, which is kind of what you're saying.
I'm just saying, yeah.
Same thing. We, we resolve it on the twenty-fourth, or twenty-third?
Yeah, whatever, whatever date. I mean, I, I know it's unfortunate to have to have that time crunch so close to when it's submitted, but it seems to be a tipping point that we can't work through, so I, rather than debating it more tonight.
I think there might be support to have a motion to reconsider.
What were you gonna say?
I'd like a response when our council had time to, to review it on, on the what trumps what, or if there's a number in the, in the salary ordinance. Because it seems like some ordinances maybe trump others, and it's like, if we just pass an ordinance to reduce things, well, if we also pass an ordinance to have a certain amount of ability or numbers, then. I, I just would like to know, is there, is there precedent, whatever, and it may take you a little bit to find that, so. Because that's, that's my, my second hangup, I've got the two, was two, that's my second.
Just from a procedure standpoint, we're gonna have to reconsider if we want to consider this budget. As long as we have to start with the first version again, right?
Yes.
First, second, and then this, it was failed on the third vote. So either reconsider this one, or we're gonna have to start over. So there's gonna have to be.
That's true.
We have to, we have to start.
Yeah, we would have to start over through all three readings, because.
Oh, I'm thinking like, what, why do we have to get rid of all the changes we made to the budget? I was thinking.
That'd be the process.
Yeah, you know.
So if somebody, if somebody voted against it, made a motion to reconsider.
We would have to suspend.
No.
If, if we didn't.
If we, if, if tonight, somebody voted against the budget, made a motion to reconsider, and then we passed it, we could pass it on that final reading. If we leave it as it is and come back, then we would have to start over on all three readings.
And we'd have, and in order to meet our deadline of November first, we would have to suspend the rules.
Or have two meetings.
Or we'll have two meetings before November first, yeah.
Right.
Huh, I would not consider that.
So the, I guess the question would be is, is there anyone who voted against it willing to make the motion?
To reconsider.
To reconsider, and as well as a special meeting on the twenty-fourth.
In order for me to reconsider, that meeting would have to be made on the twenty-fourth.
I'd be okay with that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Because that way.
Include that in the motion, yeah.
Because that way we'll know what the county's done, and we can do the budget accordingly.
That was my intent from the get-go. Just have a secondary meeting for reduction, so.
So would that be, would that be a motion contingent on meeting?
I would say, but then if, if happens and we don't have, if, if, if there's enough people that have an issue with it, and we, and we would not have a meeting on the twenty-fourth. If people just don't show up, or whatever, then it is as passed.
Well, the question isn't, that's a different question. The question is if the county does something which forces us to do, to make adjustments, that's the question here. Otherwise, that's the only issue.
I see Nathan's point, exactly, if he doesn't vote for it tonight, and we do a meeting contingent on twenty-fourth, we ultimately cannot show up, and he's gonna get this budget. But we know the county's, that money's not gonna be there, because the county's gonna take it.
For some form of.
And we will have to adjust that, we would be irresponsible not to show up to that meeting and not adjust the votes.
I mean, I can tell you right now, with or without you all, if the county takes the step to impose the jail tax and takes away one point nine million of our edit tax, we're gonna be cutting, whether you're, we don't, I'm sorry. I mean, at that point.
So we're gonna be back here regardless?
With or without you, I mean, the administration's not gonna make cuts. And it's more than just, I mean, at the end of the day, we're gonna be, we're gonna be looking hard, long and hard on a lot of city services, we lose one point nine million dollars. So, you know, I don't care whether or not you're gonna be here the twenty-fourth or not, if they impose the jail tax, there's gonna be cuts.
Well, and those would have to be permanent cuts, because that's indefinite.
Yes.
I mean, that, we'd have to reconsider permanent cuts to our budget each year, so, yeah, I mean.
I mean, I can tell you, I mean, I can tell you right now, everything, everything will be on the table. Every agreement we have with the county.
No. It's a different level of government.
Will, will we have a quorum for the twenty-fourth?
I'll be here.
I can't, if it's the twenty-fourth, I cannot, if it's the twenty, wait, hold on. Yes, twenty-fourth is a Wednesday, right? Yes.
Correct, you can do Wednesday and Thursday. I can be here after six fifty.
So everyone in attendance here can attend.
Stay October twenty-fourth at seven?
Just, just so you all know, it will take time to change those, you all will have time to discuss, and then you're gonna have to give me time to change it, and then you all need to stay here, because I need you to sign it that night.
That night, we'll know what the damage is, if there is.
Right.
I guess, I, I, I'm sure everybody's on the same page here.
I yield my time to you.
If, if, the issue, I mean, if you approve the budget tonight, the Wednesday meeting on the, on the twenty-fourth is reduction to take effective January one to reflect whatever the county may or may not have, so there's really nothing for it to change.
Oh, okay, I see.
What she want?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, I, yeah.
Right.
If you're gonna adopt the budget tonight, yes. So then I can make, according to the attorneys, I can make the motion to reconsider with the, with that October, reconsider as passing the budget, as it was amended, because we had that wide, with the, the meeting for October twenty-fourth to be scheduled for seven, yeah. All right, so I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
What is the motion? Pass the budget.
To pass the budget, that we'll have the budget reduction October twenty-fourth, going by whatever the county...
It's supposed to reconsider, yeah.
It's a motion to reconsider, and if that passes, then, then a motion to pass the budget as amended can be made.
Right. So now we need to vote on the motion to reconsider.
So the negative vote on your resolution to reconsider.
Right.
So I have the motion and a second, so...
Negative vote.
Oh, yeah.
So all those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Did it pass? I think, Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Stubb...
Nope. Nope.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Councilperson Yon?
Aye.
Councilperson Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Samuel?
No.
Councilperson Ellis?
No.
Council President Gill?
Aye.
Yes, it did pass.
So we're gonna make motion to approve eighteen O R sixty, the final reading.
Got a motion and a second?
Roll call, it's going in a one.
So I got a motion and a second, two passes, but it is based on that we are having that October twenty-fourth budget reduction meeting, correct?
Seven P M.
I want that on the...
I'm gonna work this later.
Will you amend your motion to include the meeting?
Yes, sorry.
I'll reamend my second.
All right.
So does that mean if the meeting doesn't happen, this is null and void?
No.
That's the only reason why I'm reconsidering, because I agree to have this meeting, so I can get that, that done.
And that's, so this is exactly what I made the motion for the first time.
You all want me to walk out right now, or walk out right now?
No, no, no. Please walk out.
Walk out.
I mean, really. So, are we doing a roll call vote, or what are we doing? Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Stubb?
Nope.
Councilperson Yon?
Aye.
Councilperson Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Samuel?
Nope.
Councilperson Ellis?
No.
Councilperson Gill?
Aye.
Okay, don't go anywhere. But he almost made me walk out, just so you know. Okay, well, don't go anywhere.
Put it in the mess.
Please, don't go anywhere.
Put it in the mess.
You all are going to sign.
I'm sure you mark today, today your name.
Yes, passing this around right this minute, and you need to sign it by your name, you need to put how you voted. Is there any department heads here?
No, they are there.
Do we have a council attorney report?
I asked, I asked the attorney to bring a district report.
Was there any public comments?
They blessed.
No, says forty-eight, eight, yes, throw that away. So then we'll move on to council comments. Councilperson White?
No comment.
Councilperson...
No comment.
Councilperson Yon?
Just want to mention, I, I will not be at our next city council meeting, October fifteenth, I'll be out of the country. I will review the agenda and send an email with any comments prior to, but I look forward to our meeting on October twenty-fourth at seven P M. That's it.
Councilperson Maple?
No comment.
Councilperson Ellen?
No comment.
Councilperson Ellis?
I'm staying all evening? Nope.
Councilperson Samuel?
No.
Did you say no?
No.
All right. I got a couple things, real quick. Sorry, but we have, we wanted to consider having a table at the Clark County Youth Shelter, it is that celebrity waiter, it is on December the eleventh, it's a Tuesday at six P M. I don't know if we did in the past, if we did the jingle bell at six hundred, or the... Got a motion and a second. I was embarrassing by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
I'm saying...
Okay, good passes. So I will pass this on to you, Vicki, because I...
I voted no, because I bought for not getting money to the table.
Also, I need to know if council is going, if anybody wants to volunteer to help out the table, a city council table for the trick or treat downtown. Yes, Sarah needs to know, she sent an email today. Hello? Anybody, anybody?
Callie, you gonna do that again?
I'm sorry.
She didn't do it last year, me and Ron did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're not at the home yet.
Um, what day is it?
It's the Monday before...
Let me make sure I'm in town.
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth. I, I will not be able to be there.
Um, I, I, the past years I've decorated, but I have not been able to be there for the passing out.